This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel Eight or the city's website. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and INR IT director will be the co-host. Council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. Members of the public who have registered to speak will be recognized at the proper time. As a reminder, we will use roll call votes only when required by law or when requested by a council member or the clerk. Other votes will be voice votes counted by raising hands in the Zoom app for as the chair determines. If a member disagrees with the stated outcome of the vote or feels that their vote was not properly heard or is not recognized, that member should immediately request the mayor's attention. This time I'll call the regular meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Noble? Uh, councilmember Noble, I see you just put your headphones on. I just need a present.
My apologies, I stepped away for a minute.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wardiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurst?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mayor Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance with those in the Zoom webinar. Please unmute your microphone and join in Pledge of Allegiance while the clerk displays the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All public comment will occur during citizen communication except for public hearings. Persons who registered to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Public hearing testimony will occur during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does any council member wish to move to modify this practice? Seeing none, next on the agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council and business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, we take your comments seriously. We do not generally respond to comments until later in the evening. Council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. Council members can ask questions of the speakers if desired. The city needed advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. If a council member wants to ask a question, please ask to be recognized when the speaker is finished. Thank you. We have one speaker this evening, that is Steve Douglas.
Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Happy holidays. Um, I, uh, wanted to, uh, see if I can get your, I want to get your attention, support and I understand there's two letters of support for the SAP. And one of them is the Energy Outreach Colorado. That program is not going to help, uh, the folks who live in the vicinity of Suncor. Two hundred, maybe four hundred homes would be, uh, soaking up this eight hundred seventy thousand dollars part of this program. And I don't, I believe that's not a very, be very effective. You have an opportunity to make things right with Suncor. Uh, and, and hopefully, you know, this is not your only chance, but this is a big one and we need to get it right. Or we can just keep, you know, saying we're going to make things better for the folks who live in that affected area. And then the outcome is really nothing. And, and that's in the southern area. In the northern area, you have Oakwood, and I do appreciate those who spoke up last week on the study session. Opposing the shareback agreement or extension of shareback right now. Oakwood is receiving what Shay had, which amounts to about a million or more a year for the sales and use on their property, and that includes King Supers, Kentucky Chicken, the tire store and on and on. And, uh, I understand that this is a bipartisan, a nonpartisan council. But right now it's more of a corporate city council because of how things are faring for a big developer like Oakwood. And I understand that on the table is a hundred fifty three, a hundred fifty three million dollars worth of projects that they have identified that they are responsible for. And, but when those projects come up, uh, and when they do, will the city be prepared to pay their share? And, and knowing that if you continue this with Oakwood, they are not reciprocating this back to those homeowners who continue to pay these high-end mills. And, uh, also, I don't, I know I didn't sign up to talk about it, but you have the Nexus contract. And please do not agree to go pass a thirty-year service plan. Thank you.
Mayor Hughesman, I believe you're muted.
Thank you. Are there any que- council members have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you for speaking with us tonight. If follow-up is necessary, you should expect to be contacted by a staff member. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. Written comments were received by the deadline incorporated into the updated agenda. If anyone wishes to speak at a future council meeting, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on the agenda is presentations. First step is the COVID nineteen update. Will interim city manager Tinkenberg please provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID nineteen crisis?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to, uh, let you know that, once again, just a repeat of previous updates that we're continuing to operate under the twenty twenty budget reductions. And that has been successful, as you could see from the last report from the Director of Finance. Our expenditures are significantly under the reduced budget as well as the reduced revenues. We do continue to operate with a reduced number of employees in our facilities. Basically, the minimum necessary to continue operations and services. All other staff are working remotely by computer and telephone. To the extent possible, we rotate people through the facilities to maintain that crew presence. We also continue to utilize the Qless software for people to make appointments if they need assistance in person. Cases in Adams County have dropped somewhat, but they're still high. And Adams County continues to be at level red. Other than that, we continue to publish information about programs that are still available for businesses in the community. And we'll continue to do that as long as those programs are available. The Congress did pass a new relief package. We'll need to absorb and understand what that entails and what's authorized by that program. We do continue to recruit to fill vacancies and continue to have success in spite of the pandemic. It is strange, however, to onboard and greet employees and not meet them in person for months at a time. So, but continue doing the best we can. We'll continue to operate under our reopening plan, which basically there's no change and don't anticipate a change until there is extensive vaccination occurring. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager Kathy Blakeman for update on the internal services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm going to give you some updates as it pertains to internal services. Let's start with the update on the funds for the CARES Act. So with the CARES Act that we received funds from Adams County, while the numbers I'm about ready to give you are most likely going to change just slightly, these are starting to firm up pretty well. You'll get a final report in January on these numbers. But so financial assistance went out to residents to the tune of seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for nonprofits and food banks. It was three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And financial assistance to local businesses was one point one eight million dollars. And the awards to seniors was a little over forty-three thousand dollars. And there were also additional, on top of that, there were some additional seniors who were able to be helped by the Senior Hub Program, which was outside of, of course, the, um, the city funding. Yeah, in addition to that, we, which incidentally those added up to two point two million. In addition to that, seven hundred and sixty thousand was spent directly on costs that were direct costs for COVID nineteen. So that were things like signs, personal protective equipment, additional cleaning, standard sanitizing supplies, technology, software items, those sorts of things. And so the entire funding of four point six million will in fact be absorbed, absorbed out into the community or it aren't within our personal use. Wanted to update you a little more on the night of lights. I know you received some information from Jody in Community Relations. Last Friday, December eighteen, the city joined Adams County. We asked residents to celebrate a night of light. And the information they were able to pull forward was that by asking the citizens to turn on their lights to show support for the frontline workers, they were able to see that on Facebook, the campaign reached eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-two people. And on Twitter and next door, there were an additional seven thousand three hundred and ninety-seven, what they call impressions. And those are the number of times that the content was displayed on someone's and viewed on someone's screen. So that's considered, um, a very successful outreach by our community to show support for frontline workers. Courts has just completed their third week of virtual hearings. They said there are still just a very, very few glitches, but they are responding to those as they happen. And those processes, as they learn along the way, they're quickly making those, those changes to be more efficient and effective for our citizens. E-ticketing had actually imported the first bank of electronic citations within this past week. And there were a total of eleven that they were able to test with. They have a new list of items that, issues that came out of that, that they learned that need to be corrected, but they're being worked on at this point in time. So they'll, they'll continue to work through those issues and then do another round as, as it becomes appropriate to do that. Within HR, they have been reviewing and working on policy changes that are, there's a, there's a variety of them that will be coming out for twenty twenty-one mandates. And council, you'll receive further information on those within the first, very first part of next year, hopefully within January, on those items that actually do affect Commerce City. Not all of them will. But we'll give you more information on that as it becomes a little more available to us. Finance has stated that they have ninety-five year-to-date audit engagements were completed and assessed. There are seventy audits currently in process right now, and those are all being done remotely. So either phone, email, or internet with the taxpayers. And only six audits in the year have been postponed due to COVID, which is, that number has not changed for quite some time. So we haven't had any new ones on that. And I would offer that finally, IT, they continue to work on improving cyber, cybersecurity. There have been many, many more cybersecurity attempts that have come into the organization. IT has rolled out a new cybersecurity training program. It's actually very, very good. I've taken two of their classes so far. So they're being, that's been rolled out to the city. And IT also has added some tools directly to our, our email that can actually look for those suspicious emails, make it easier for us to be able to report those issues over to IT. And then IT has the tools to be able to block those in the event that those show up on anyone else's emails as well. So it's a much quicker response and a much more accurate response to handling the cybersecurity issues. So with that, I'll hand it back over to the city manager, Tinkenberg.
Thank you, Kathy. In terms of community development, they remain just as busy as before. Land use cases still hover between hundred and sixty-five and one hundred and seventy cases on an ongoing basis. Also, in regards to the COVID CARES Act money, all funds for the mortgage and rental assistance program have been expended by Maker Housing Partners. So that's good news. Turning to economic development, actually Kathy covered the assistance programs. So I won't go into any more detail there. Parks, Recreation, Golf, Recreation Division continues to be busy. But they do operate under the limit of a maximum of ten people per class or per weight room. Also, outdoor classes can have up to ten registered participants plus the instructor. And then reservations are required for all programs. Also, the outdoor guided activities may be conducted at twenty-five percent capacity, not to exceed ten people, whichever the last. Children's day camps, youth sports day camps and exempt single skill builder youth camps may be conducted with no more than ten participants outdoors only. And the recreation centers continue to operate at about ninety-eight. One is ninety-eight, the other one is ninety-six percent of the resident reservation slots are filled, so high utilization. They also delivered two hundred and fifty holiday meals on Friday, the eighteenth. And holiday gifts were distributed for almost three hundred Commerce City children. And then in terms of the golf course, golf is open to the public as weather permits. The indoor dining room is closed, but they're providing food pickup to go and also patio dining. And then Public Works, again, you know, all of the weatherization type of activities with vehicles, equipment is continuing as well as fall maintenance work. They do still have generally two to three staff members quarantined in each of the work groups, the parks maintenance crew and the street maintenance crews. And generally, you know, whenever someone is exposed to someone, then the staff member has to be quarantined for some time. Otherwise, you know, they're continuing with their routine operations for pavement management or road maintenance, pavement, pothole patching, that type of thing. And still working on the programmed traffic sign replacement program through December. I'll have some, uh, more general operational items to report on to you in the report section later in the meeting. So that concludes an update regarding our COVID activities. Any questions?
Are there any questions from council to staff regarding this item? Councilmember Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to make a point tonight that the last time I reported on my own Facebook feed for council member was September second, and there were nine hundred and twenty-five cases in Commerce City on September second. On December twenty-first, we received a report that there were four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. And we don't often put the numbers on this, so for people who aren't aware of what's happening in Commerce City, I think it's important to know that we need to be, continue to be vigilant. If our cases are going down, that's good, but we have clearly had an exponential explosion. And I do want to add that we're again having technical problems. The online, uh, the Wi-Fi version of the meeting has no sound. But there is video.
They're working on that, so thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff regarding this?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just really quickly wanted to, to comment on, uh, the food delivery and gift delivery that happened on Friday. Want to say I appreciate the Parks and Rec staff that was there. Also, some of the other city staff was there. Some volunteers were there and, uh, overall it was a really good experience and response from everybody that we handed the stuff out to. It, it just was a really good event, so I appreciate the city staff, you know, putting that together and getting that all set up for us. And it was a, um, a good little group, a good little, good little event to hold. And it was just good to get back to the community and see how, um, happy and pleased they were for, for getting that stuff. So I appreciate all the city staff for doing that because it was a really good event. So just wanted to comment on that real quick before we let that pass.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next presentation, which is the Suncor Set Process Update. Well, Dominic Martinelli, environmental planner, please make the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I will be giving the presentation tonight on a update on the Suncor Set Process. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And we should be good to go. So just a, just a brief overview of where we got and how we got here. So on March sixth, Suncor reached a settlement with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for a number of past air quality violations that occurred. As you will recall, the overall fine amount was nine million dollars. Two point six million dollars of this was set aside for what's called the Suncor Supplemental Environmental Projects Fund. So this is a funding process that the state has for violations that occur of an environmental nature. And these funds are typically used for some sort of environmentally related project that has a relationship to the violation of the nature. So as part of this, there's been a two point six million dollar bank of the fine that's been set aside. The way that the state has decided to go about this is they're requesting applications from a number of local governments as well as nonprofits. And they're essentially saying that out of this two point six million, the maximum awarding to each individual project can be eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So there will be at least three projects that get funded from this, just doing the math. It could potentially be more than three projects. So local governments, as we mentioned, that are considered impacts and impacted communities, which are relatively adjacent to the refinery and an industrial graphical boundary. We'll get into that a little bit more in the presentation. We'll have the ability to submit a project. And the deadline for submissions is December thirty-first at five o'clock. So they provided some additional information on the state evaluation criteria of essentially what the evaluation committee, which is made up of a number of local residences, a member of Colorado Public Health and, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, as well as one member from Suncor, they'll be reviewing these applications. It's essentially making sure that it has some sort of measurable environmental or public health impact. The project benefits the geographic area impacted by the violations. And that has some sort of environmental connection with the type of violation that's occurring. Some other notes that are important to note as well, so the funds can't be utilized for items that are already within an adopted city budget or long-term capital improvement program. And organizations are able to submit multiple applications. But during the, the RFA that was released in November, they specifically state that an organization would not receive more than one award for SEP funding. And that would be considered during the review process. So for instance, if Commerce City wanted to put forward three SEP applications, the maximum number of funds that the, that the city could be awarded would be one. So again, just providing a little bit of context on where we were, we did do a significant amount of community engagement and outreach on this. There was a website that was developed at c three gov dot com slash SEP, where a, a public comment form and a survey was listed for about a month. We received a number of submissions on that, which ended up developing into a study session that was held with city council back in September. There was a town hall that occurred on August thirteenth and was attended by thirty-two participants. More questions were answered about the, the general process and there were ideas that were listened to from the community. So again, that study session was held on September fourteenth. It provided background on the process, a summary of the community engagement that was conducted. And then there were four potential project ideas that were brought forward. And you all provided us with some additional considerations and thought regarding those concepts. And then from that point on, staff worked to get a little bit more details on potential project submissions. There was a listening session that was held with members of Cult of Ondo on December ninth that discussed the two final projects that the city was considering moving forward. It's listed feedback and other considerations for them to include in those applications. So I shall remember this was one of the survey questions that we asked. So initially it was what area should the city focus on in its submittal? Air quality and water quality as well as environmental restoration ranked the highest out of all the submissions. And the proposed project submissions that the city is planning to move forward for the RFAs are the following. So this, the first one is going to be a low-cost air quality monitoring pilot program, which would add a minimum measure part or PM two point five particulate matter as well as total VOCs, volatile organic compounds. And we would partner with the selected environmental consultant and their subcontractors. So you'll remember, Pinion Environmental would be potentially assisting with that in any subconscious that they would have on the monitoring equipment. An intentional and thoughtful approach to engaging the priority communities is something that is significant and important as part of this. So it would be compared to monitoring more technical and detailed speciated information on specific VOCs and things of that nature, more on kind of what the Camel Mobile Lab would do, that CDP HES. This is more focused on community engagement and general information to the public. So there's a, a strong component of considering community education and informing people on the results of the data that's being recorded and sort of a community education quarter of it. There would be anywhere between thirty to fifty monitors proposed as part of this. That exact number would be determined through a significant amount of community engagement that would occur to, number one, determine what other types of pollutants might be measured, aside from the two basic ones that are listed, where the locations will be placed and any other considerations regarding how to present this information to the public and what types of considerations should be made in communicating the information that's collected. So having this information, this data would have the potential to significantly enhance air quality policy recommendations that Pinion Environmental will make through the process. So having that data and being able to understand and have a full view of the picture will ultimately lead to better policy in the end. There would be a significant online portal that's developed as well in terms of displaying this information that would potentially be hosted on the city's website. We are still finalizing some of the details on what that would look like. So this would be proposed as an initial pilot program for an initial two-year term. We're still looking at the differences potentially between leasing versus purchasing information and some of the cost savings and differentials there. But the idea would be to deploy an initial program, monitor and evaluate the results, evaluate the effectiveness of the public engagement efforts that are occurring, and then make a series of recommendations in the final report that's due to the state regarding a permanent and final program that would eventually be developed in the city. So doing an initial study through this pilot program and understanding where improvements can be made before significant public investment is, is made towards that. So the proposed project budget, it wouldn't, it would be a program, so the city would request no more than five hundred thousand dollars as part of this grant proposal. And most likely will come anywhere between three hundred and five hundred thousand. We're still finalizing here that, that here in the last couple of days before. We're still finalizing here that, that here in the last couple of days before submission. So some of the, there's three main goals that would be identified with this program. The first one would be to fill an identified gap in low-cost monitoring sensor technology in the couriers of the city, address a commonly articulated need for additional information and community education as regards to air quality conditions in the city. Through the engagement the city's done around SEP and through other engagement efforts, including oil and gas. This has been something that's come up in terms of residents, the community wanting to understand what's in their air, understanding the impacts that it might have on their health. And this program is something that would be aimed to try and address those concerns. And then the third outcome of this would be to develop a series of findings during the initial pilot program that would provide a series of qualitative and quantitative recommendations for the development of a permanent monitoring network. So this map that we're showing, within the RFA that the state released, specified a geographic tiers of priority for the application. So basically, we'll be looking at a geographic area in conjunction with the boundary of the refinery. So they've essentially said that priorities that target the majority of their focus and what's called Tier One, which would be a two-mile radius from the refinery, would be selected and highly considered as part of that process. That's not to mean that anything that's in this sort of gray semicircle wouldn't be considered for monitoring locations. Ideally, you'd probably place one or two monitors outside of the circle for kind of a control and comparing data. But the majority and the focus of these monitors would most likely be included in that, that boundary. The second proposal that the city is working with Energy Outreach Colorado as a partner on, so Energy Outreach Colorado is putting forward what they call their Healthy Community Proposal. The city would look to be a referral partner on that program where they're proposing to put up to upgrades of up to 200 residential units in Commerce City, as well as on Incorporated Adams County, for a number of weatherization and indoor air quality improvements. So this is kind of thinking of trying to come up with ways to improve indoor air quality. So 90% of the time that we typically spend is indoors and within our homes, especially during COVID. And trying to think a bit, think about it in terms of trying to improve that indoor air quality. And there are a number of health studies that have been conducted that show positive health outcomes from improved ventilation systems, increasing the presence of air filters and purifiers, and then other weatherization improvements. They would also be conducting home health surveys as well. And then looking at the air quality before improvements and then measuring the, the air quality within the home after doing that. So there would be dual benefit of not only increased energy efficiency within the home, but the health impacts from increased indoor air quality improvements. They're also proposing some significant tree plantings in the communities as well. They would be planting about 400 trees outside of 200 residential homes in conjunction with this. They would be looking to go close to the limit of about 870,000 for this proposal. And one other, what it means to be a referral partner as part of this is we have the potential to leverage our existing community development block grant program to potentially, through matching funds, to potentially increase the homes beyond 200. So this is an estimate value at this time, and we don't know specifically, but it could potentially lead up to an additional 30 homes per year through referring folks that we get through our CDBG program that are more suited for this program and then vice versa. So it's kind of a shared benefit. They get applications through their program that don't necessarily meet their criteria, but might, might meet the program that we have in the city. So just next steps on, on moving forward. So we did include two draft letters of support for each of these efforts. One would go with the city's application for the air monitoring proposal. The other one would be included within Energy Outreach's Colorado's proposal. A motion can be made during council admin business to authorize the signature of that. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment are in the process of finalizing their evaluation committee, but they'll be starting to review those proposals following the deadline of December 31st. Anyone that applied for the SEP funds would be notified on March 31st if they received funding. And then projects that are submitted, so if we submit and then the project is ultimately not selected for funding, it would be retained by the state for up to two years in the event additional funds become available. And potentially those, those funds could fund that project, but that, that's not necessarily a guarantee. So all the projects that are funded through the SEP money must be completed and the final application reports would need to be submitted before May 31st, 2024. So there is a duration on how long it can take to implement these programs and monitor the success and the results of them, and then ultimately provide a report to the state. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Martinelli regarding this presentation? Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli, for the presentation. I was just confused. I don't know if I missed it. But overall, can you tell us how many air quality violations did Suncor have until the agreement was reached? Like, is there a total amount? Number amount that they had?
I believe that number would be included within the settlement agreement in the notice that CDPH put out. Unfortunately, I don't have that number with me or have it in a readily accessible place, but we can follow up via correspondence following the meeting and get you the exact number of violations and provide the, the notice that was provided by the state.
Okay, yeah, if you can let the mayor and the other council know that total number, that'd be great. Then I had another question. Do you know how long did it take Suncor to make the agreement with the CDPH before they got involved?
I'm not sure if I have that specific background or information.
If you can let me know that as well, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you. First of all, I was curious if you have an update on what happened to the CDPH air monitoring that was supposed to be occurring? Councilmember Madera even offered his electricity to operate the air monitor, and I haven't heard anything since. We haven't heard anything since. Do you know?
Yeah, we can certainly provide an update on that. So the state has been working with Eagle Point Recreation Center to, to place. So they actually installed electrical equipment to hook up what's called their Camel Mobile Lab. So this is a, a monitoring facility that would be looking at more of the, the specific technical speciated data regarding air quality. So I believe that is close to being finalized and that should be deployed here soon. The, the state is working to deploy SPOD locations. There were some concerns about where they originally had planned to locate some of the monitors in terms of security concerns. I do not have an update at this time, but it, it sounds like they'll, they'll be planning to work with private landowners to potentially place those monitors in the city.
Thank you, Dominic. Could you also please use laypeople's language for anyone who might be listening and isn't familiar with the technical terms for the equipment that you're referring to?
Yeah, so I can provide a little bit of a, a background. So the information that we were discussing at the REC Center, it's basically a pull behind trailer. So you'd be able to hitch it to the back of a truck. It's about 10 feet long. It's contained within kind of a trailer type scenario and it would measure pollutants in the air. And that data would be collected and captured and analyzed by the state. For the other low-cost monitors, which they're still trying to find locations on, those are essentially monitors that are placed on a tripod and have a small solar panel on top. And those read less detailed information on air quality conditions. And there would be more of them than just the one facility that was described previously.
So I'm curious about the first project. Well, actually, it, yeah, okay, let me just start with that one. The first project, and you have it budgeted for 500,000 or less. And I noticed that you're talking about a total VOC reading. So you're not going to be finding out whether it's benzene or ethylene or whatever might be coming out and causing particular problems or where the root cause is, correct?
So the way that that would work in terms of total VOCs is, so you would be taking very basic information on particular matter, as well as total volatile organic compounds. You're correct in saying that you would not necessarily be able to definitively state what the level of benzene is versus toluene or any specific VOC. But another component of the proposal is if there is a moment where the total volatile organic compound spike and there's a reading that indicates that there might be some sort of incident, the proposal would also include money for SUMA canisters. The specific amount isn't defined yet, but those would be deployed in the event that those readings spike a, a level that increases beyond health guidelines. And then at that point, with the SUMA canisters, you, you canisters, you'd be able to go in depth and understand what the specific levels were and what they were during that period in time.
So I'm curious why 370,000 is being left on the table on that project? Why that money isn't being used to improve the level of information?
So the reason that it's proposed this way in this proposal is, is understanding there's a finite, finite limit of $870,000 and trying to come up with the program that greatest fits the, the needs that were kind of described through the community engagement process. And a lot of that was around community outreach and engagement, which does make up a significant component of that, that $500,000 in terms of scheduling public meetings, making sure that that time is available and, and kind of coordinating those activities. Once you start to get into more of that speciated information, so being able to, if you were going to have more technical information, the cost on that starts to increase. And you would quickly, as you approached that $870,000, have to scale back the amount of monitors that you can potentially place. So understanding that the state is looking at doing more of this technical analysis and being able to determine what the specific levels of all of those VOCs that you described are, it wouldn't necessarily make sense for the city to put forward a proposal that duplicates that. So we kind of looked at the space of where everything is and understanding what concurrent efforts are occurring and trying to find a program that met the needs that weren't being filled. Does that make sense?
Yes, if, if CDPH is going to do specific monitoring, then yes, that makes sense. I look forward to that. Then my final question at this point is, what was Cultivando's response to these two projects of the 18 people who were at the meeting?
So kind of a brief summary of that meeting. So we, we provided a detailed description of the community engagement process, the information that we received and talked about these two items generally in depth. We didn't go into probably a very high level of detail of exactly what these monitors would do and all of that. But there was a strong emphasis on education and reaching out with the community. One of the things that we heard during this listening session was it sounded like residents of the Latino community in Commerce City wanted, didn't really have a concept of what the health impacts were and have education on, on what's in the air. So that's really kind of, we took that feedback and tried to roll it into this proposal to make sure that, okay, if we put this proposal forward and we focus more on the low-cost monitors, we can start to paint a picture of, okay, what's happening? How can we describe that? So it wasn't, we didn't really get sort of a thumbs up, thumbs down. We, that there was anything sort of wrong with our proposal. It was more of feedback of what, what they would like to see that could enhance the success of the program if funds are awarded.
Okay, then I'm sorry, I do have a follow-up. In that case, then, why does the presentation say that you are not recommending the air monitoring and educational component when that appears to be from what you just said, what the community actually wants?
I'm sorry, where in the, just so I can make sure I understand, where are you, where are you referencing that?
On the, on one of the two slides regarding the air monitoring program?
Okay, I'll, I'll pull up the presentation here again, just so I can make sure. Is it this slide?
Yes, maybe less likely to be approved since it is not a direct capital investment in the community, which gets me back to the 370,000 again.
You mentioned that in terms of community engagement, though?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, I am. I'm sorry, I personally am confused. Maybe other people can ask questions and it will come out more clearly. But right now, it appears to say that the program that we're suggesting, one of the two projects is one that we're going, we may go forward with, even though it may not be chosen because it's not a direct capital investment. There is no reason for it not to be a capital investment if we're leaving 370,000 on the table. It can go up to 870,000 and this proposed project budget is 500,000 or less.
So I'm, I'm looking at this and trying to remember exactly what we had on, on the language for this. So I'll kind of say that this may have been something that we had had from a, a previous analysis. So it is, so it's, it's not permanent equipment as part of the, the pilot program. So obviously, it's leased equipment. So again, this is just kind of a potential guess. So we're, we're trying to, to kind of think about the pros and the cons of this analysis and see what might be something that could be moved forward. But it's not to necessarily say that it wouldn't be selected. There is, there has been a lot of positive feedback that the city has gotten from this concept. And it's been something that has been communicated through the city's public engagement, as well as the state's, as well as Suncor, that there is this need for it. So the capital investment has, it, it does in some ways. So this, this does have a tangible connection to tangible benefits for the community. And there is some, necessarily some sort of monetary value associated with members of the community having additional information regarding this. So it's a little bit harder to track. And, and I think why we have this was, for instance, compared to a program where you're improving homes at $10,000 per home or something like that, you can track the monetary value associated with each improvement. This is a little bit harder to measure and quantify, but I don't know if that necessarily makes it a weaker submission. Does that make sense? I think you're on mute.
Sorry, I was just reading what was on the slide. And then what was the reaction to the second project by the community group?
I think there, there was additional positive feedback that was received from the group on that in terms of understanding that, yes, you're, you're in your home for 90% of the day and even more during COVID, that the air that you breathe inside of your home is almost as crucial as the air quality outside. And obviously, the outdoor air quality influences the indoor air quality. So there was some, some thought and some feedback on that in terms of having that being something that people were excited about, that type of improvement being placed on people's homes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, guys. I, I do have a couple of things I want to highlight and ask questions about. But I, I think the first thing that I'd just like to have you reiterate, if you could, is our, our ability to impact the process up to this point. And really what I'm looking for is just an explanation of how this is a state project violated a state permit. And so we really haven't had any say up to this. And we're really just trying to find the best project possible for the community with these funds that we think could actually get selected and move forward with. So do you mind doing a quick overview of, of how this is a state process and hasn't been really ours?
Yeah, so I could provide a little bit of background on it. And I think the, and I'll, I'll talk about this from the city's involvement as a local government in this process. But also talk about the, the state's involvement and all of that. So first and foremost, the city is a participant in the state's process here. So this is a violation that occurred of the, the Title V permit of EPA regulations, which, as well as state, state regulations, which ultimately came to the process where the refinery and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment came to a settlement agreement in that realm. So Commerce City wasn't necessarily the one, in this case, that was instituting the fines or the violation. So as part of that, the, the process and the framework that the state has in place during these types of settlements is to Um, during these types of settlements is to take portions of the violation. And put it towards community funds and community, community oriented projects through their supplemental environmental projects. So a portion of the overall fine that was provided um went to the SEP process. And what we're talking about in all this community engagement and and everything that we're talking about. Around the application is the application that the state made available. To nonprofits and local governments to submit for the money that was made available. So when we've been conducting community engagement, it's been around, what do members of the public? And the residents and the citizens of Commerce City feel. They should provide the city in terms of feedback for our submission to this pool of money, to the grant money.
Then can you, so it's obviously the local government, so um Denver, us possibly Aurora, I guess um. All have the ability to put in, but is there, who else is qualified? You said there's nonprofits um. Can you give an idea of what kind of work they would have to do to qualify for this? And and really what I I'm trying to draw out is what other projects are going to be out there? When we're talking about, you know, there being a select amount of money and only one project from our um proposals that will be selected, I just want to know, you know, like. I know you might not know what everybody else is going to to present to the state, but just trying to figure out, you know, what exactly might be out there. Um, so we can select the best project for select, you know, that that has the best chance to be selected, I guess, through the process.
Yeah, and I'm I'm actually going to go ahead and just read off the application here in terms of the section that they place on eligible organizations. Um, that includes. Basically, two main categories. The first one is public and governmental entities. That includes schools and universities. Um, the second one is nonprofit organizations with a five oh one C three or C three tax exempt status. So that that's essentially what we're looking at in terms of organizations that can apply. So Energy Outreach Colorado. Um, the Regional Air Quality Council, other other entities that are established as a nonprofit. Have the ability to submit for funds. There are a number of nonprofits that work in the space um that. And I'm not sure, since I'm not the the one reviewing the applications from the state side, how many. Potential applications will be coming in, but that's the, that's basically the the basket of potential, potentially qualified groups.
And so one clarification for me, if we say we submit the air quality monitoring system, that's our one. Um, and if we're just in matter of support for the other, we really didn't submit two, we just submitted one and had support for a second.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So we're we're submitting one with the intent of understanding the limit that they've placed in the application of. One project being granted for each organization as a maximum. And then working to support another application by another organization.
All right, so. So moving on to the individual projects, um, you saw, so the first one, you know, it's five hundred thousand and below. Is that, first of all, is that, so you're saying it's a full network of sensors? Uh, it's not. A rotating site selection, right? They are actually going to be fifty sensors. Place strategically based off of, you know, our consultants findings? Is that, is that what you're going to get net?
So to provide a little bit of background on how this has been structured, so. The maximum that we would propose as part of this grant proposal, because we do have to put together a rough project budget and be able to estimate what the costs are. Um, is basically saying that it could be anywhere between thirty and fifty monitors. And it'll, it'll be developed as as to where those locations are put. Based on two main factors. So the first one is going to be the community engagement. Um, so reaching out and having conversations with a number of community members and saying. Where are you experiencing impacts? Where where do you think it might make sense to place one of these monitors? But also focusing on the. Basically, the boundary areas between industrial and residential uses. So we have a a number of um. Combinations and boundaries between industrial land uses and residential land uses in the core city. So trying to understand if we can start to look at that from kind of a scientific basis. And if we have up to fifty monitors, being able to place these in in strategic locations to be able to make. Um, size, science-based assessments of certain um conditions. But also listening to feedback that the residents have and saying. These are, these are the concerns that I've been having in terms of my health. These are, I've been having these types of impacts and saying. Okay, this might be associated with this type of pollutant at this level. And trying to estimate and figure out where it might make most sense to place monitors based on what we've heard from the community. So it's a twofold process.
All right, so the 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 thirty to fifty monitors, are they passive or they continuously monitoring?
So in terms of that, in when we say continuous, um, I don't have the exact like interval of how often it takes a reading, but it it'll be more of a continuous basis of. Getting a reading once every hour or once every hour and twenty minutes and then uploading that, it it could even be less than that. We're still finalizing the exact monitor. Um, but basically having continuous data in that basis and being able to make an estimation of how. The pollutant levels um increase, decrease, or stay the same over time.
I'm sorry, la- last one on this. Um, so I know we hired an environmental consultant recently. Um. This wasn't their sole job, um, because we don't even know that we, we are going to get this awarded. So. Is there a reason why we don't go to RFP and see if we can't find the best sensor solution out there or? Is there, is that kind of like part of the package that we went and kind of bought in? With the consultants. Um, and what I mean is, you know, just. Can we get more than fifty? Is there better placement? Is there something that gets, that can break down methane? Can you understand if it's methane or something? And and then really with that being said is, I came to this discussion kind of prepared to say, look, if we are only asking for five hundred thousand, why doesn't the city match it and make it a million and really put. Really get some data. Um, I think that's beneficial for so many of our other conversations as well. I would just advocate. That. We take a look as a council as to whatever pushes forward. If we, if we. Go with the uh what you guys are talking about tonight and everything moves forward and it got approved, I would ask my fellow council members to consider. Finding a way to to double that money and making it um. More than just an initial pilot program and trying to figure out if we can start getting some data and making some good um. Data-driven decisions around, you know, our policies moving forward. I'd feel a lot comfortable uh moving forward like that. And would be willing to talk about how that fits in the budget, but just an early suggestion. I just thought, um, you know, re- hearing you say and kind of hearing the suggestion that. We've already kind of got the solution worked out is a, is a good thing for me because that means. In my world, it's shovel ready, if you will. It's, you know, the project can be delivered at a fairly quick pace. Um, but on the other side of it, are we missing some value is one of the things that. I guess you could call it a red flag, but I I just want to highlight the point that, you know, I don't want to discount. Our ability to collect this information if there's something better out there than what what we're proposing.
So Councilmember Hearst, did you want me to follow up with some additional staff considerations and thoughts? Kind of revolving around what you said in terms of bringing this proposal forward?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you don't have to go into great detail, if you think you guys got something that is addressing those. Concerns, I I love to hear it, but, you know, I just want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a corner in a box because. Um, I know I was talking to somebody who's doing another type of sensor technology in the transportation world who. Has been been able to um fine tune some sensors on the ability to detect ma- uh methane to one part per million. And that's just not been done anywhere else. And this this guy designs air filtration for the space station, so. Um, just have heard some recent stuff in the last couple of weeks that there's some. Advancements that are currently taking place that may not be at the market today, but in three months from now, when we're talking about this, it could be. And that would be um, an opportunity, and it just like anything else, we get into air monitoring. Every year, we're probably going to get behind on the technology as it's, you know, continues to update and continues to be. What's on the market at an affordable rate is going to get better and better as we go, but just want to make sure. You know, if we're going to commit to this, that we commit and try to do what's best at the best available at the time. And I just want to leave that in the conversation as we move forward.
I'll, I'll, I'll try my best to respond as much as I can about that. There are, there are a number of considerations there. I think the first thing that I want to mention is. Kind of the air quality field, especially around continuous air monitoring is something that is. As we understand it here, the city is something that's continually evolving and growing over time, especially within the last couple of years. The field has moved relatively quickly. Um, but when we, we kind of assembled and made this recommendation was really kind of the snapshot of where we're in time. Um, at the time that we're submitting this grant in December, um, we, we are at the point where we have selected a finalist for the Environmental Consulting Services RFP. Um, the next steps are, we're going to be working towards negotiating contact, contract with that group. And um, bringing forward a scope of services and having them move it as as proposed forward. Um, one of the big things that we really looked at here is terms of of maximum community benefit. And public outcome, health outcome benefits related to the cost. So if we're looking at a program and especially in conjunction with the environmental consulting services, understanding. How much the 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 tentative budget for that is, understanding the cost of this monitoring program could be. Um, almost near what that overall cost is. And we really looked at it as something is, in in terms of the the services that would be provided by Pinion Environmental through the the scope as is roughly defined. Would initially work to make a number of policy recommendations and services, but the monitoring component of it would be much more um in-depth and and detailed. And wasn't a component or at the RFE, RFP scope as released. Um, so what this is doing in this, in this proposal is looking to significantly enhance the recommendations that that consultant would make. Um, and doing that through defining this need of a low-cost monitoring network in the city and being able to get that very basic level. Information of continuous particulate matter and um. Um, volatile organic compounds data could specifically based on certain locations could really inform and and come up with a number of. Um, significantly positive overall recommendations that that group makes. And that's not to say that. Um, once this pilot program's put in place, um, there could be additional recommendations that are made during that process. Um, on getting more of that specific data that Councilmember Noble was mentioning or including some of the technology that you were mentioning. Um, I think the first thing is is kind of learning to walk before you run. And making sure that you get the program up in place, you're able to collect data. And one of the things that we really thought about is the data that you collect is only as good as the information that you can communicate. So making sure that the communicate, community education outreach component of this is a strong focus. And making sure that we're, we're gathering data and we're gathering information, not only for the city to be able to make policy recommendations and certain decisions. But also to inform the community about what the impacts are. So. In terms of additional future efforts down the road, if if council has additional direction for staff, um, we're certainly willing and open to have those conversations. Uh, but it's in the context of where we're at in December of twenty twenty. Um, with this criteria and this this information that's been released, but released by the state. And this is staff's recommendation of potentially the best path forward um to move towards.
Appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Councilmember Waiola?
Mayor, uh, Dominic, I have a quick question for, or is it in the proposal how they're going to select the two hundred residential if this project gets picked up? How would they select the two hundred residential um from Commerce City and Unincorporated Adams County for uh the second project?
For the Energy Outreach Colorado?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if I have specific details on that, but going back to that map that I showed of the geographic tier um priority, so they would be looking at homes. One of the main factors for them is going to be geographic um boundary to the refineries and making sure that it's within that distance. Um, I don't know if I have specific details on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Dominic, um, forgot to ask a few questions. Does the city have any authority over the permits that Suncor uses?
Regarding the, the Colorado Department of Public Health and the the EPA permits?
Yes.
So the primary role, and as far as I understand it, and and Robert and Jason, if you want to weigh in a little bit, in addition to the the comments that I'm making here. Um, so the city primarily has land use authority over the refinery, so we we have a governing planning and development document. That regulates a number of Suncor refinery's activities, mostly from a planning and land use standpoint. Um, more of the the specific regulations on air quality and. The the guidelines that we we mentioned in the monthly Suncor update in terms of um levels of certain VOCs is all contained within. Suncor's um Title V permit, which is required by the um, the Clean Air Act. So that, that's all federal and state regulation and and not necessarily under Commerce City's purview.
Okay, and do we know, are they operating with any currently um and previously, but especially currently, are any of their permits outdated?
So Jason or Robert, I don't know if you want to get into more detail on that?
Sure, thank you, Dominic. Good evening, council. Um, great question, Councilmember Vala Thomas. So yes, um. Currently, as it stands, uh, Suncor refinery has two Title V. Uh, permits that are currently expired. However. Uh, they submitted for renewal of those applications within a timely manner as identified by the requirements of the state. And obviously within the federal government's will, um, requirements as well. To which it allows for them to operate as they are undergoing a review of that renewal. And then what's before us or what will be fo- before us in twenty twenty one is a renewal of their Title V permit for plant two. Uh, the other Title V permit that they have covers plants one and three. Now, once again, these Title V uh permits in a much more, just kind of more global, high level. Um, really provide a, uh, I I'll say a roadmap, a framework on the operations of their plant. Um, it's, it's more about the the monitoring, the record keeping, um. The sharing of information as it relates, like I said, to the operations. It's not looking at the relative factor of being able to uh reduce submissions uh hand over hand in a significant, in a significant way. Um, so with that, that's more tied towards the operations to what Dominic was saying. We at the local level have the ability uh to um provide or to look at enforcement of land use. And zoning and building permit as it relates to the activity of of Suncor. And with that, those are still active and ongoing uh with respect to to the operations of the facility from a. A a vertical and a on-the-ground reality.
So, so how long can they run then without outdated permits?
Um, they are allowed, and I I don't have the full spectrum of the timeframe that they're allowed. Uh, under this shield of the renewal application that they've submitted. What's been shared with us from CDPHG is that they are anticipating that public commentation uh will be forthcoming in the first quarter of next year. Um, on their uh Title V permit, uh, which goes to a thirty-day public notice period. In which then if a public hearing is requested, then one will have to be ma- will have to be scheduled within sixty days of that request. Um, by, by CDPHG to take commentation um on that Title V permit. Um, they have shared with us as well that they are trying to identify what would be the schedule for that second Title V permit. Um, whether or not that's going to be in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And partly uh, part of what we've also been made aware of is that uh the Title V uh permits that are under review. These are not the only Title V permits under review by the state here with respect to facilities of of similar nature. Uh, so they are trying to work through this backlog that has grown over a period of time. To which now they are actually moving those forward. So that that's why I said I can't give you a full spectrum of when. When they'll have that second uh Title V to us, uh, because they are partly working through it on their aspect as well.
So can s- s- staff or yourself, Jason, then keep us updated? Because it sounds like you're predicting maybe even two years, which is a real concern of mine that they could be. Continuously operating another two years possibly with um. Outdated permits. So can you keep the mayor and council updated on that? Do you know how long it takes them to get their permits current?
Yes, ma'am. You know, city manager and city attorney's office and I, we've had a number of conversations about. Over the next coming months and and obviously covering, actually coming weeks, how we want to be able to communicate, not just only with uh mayor, city council, but also with the broader community. Um, we are obviously working very closely with CDPG to get facts so that we could push it out to the community as what we understand what this process will be. Um, also expectations on how we can impact or understand uh how we can impact the permit process. Either through comments or once again, understanding what that may come back to. Once again, Title V permits are are really tied to record keeping, monitoring. And transparency of information. Those really your your primary focus. It's taking a lot of the construction permanent activity that happens at the state level, at the federal level. That gets kind of, I'll say, put into a melting pot within this annual review. That will allow for us to have, once again, a transparency of information. That we can then understand from a record keeping and a monitoring perspective. And then how that, how does that then relate back to our community? Doesn't necessarily impact or affect the operations of the facility, like I said, reducing total total emissions. But it does give us some opportunity to be able to understand, once again, the flow of information. And the turnaround of the frequency of that information.
So is there any other businesses in in Commerce City then that are allowed to operate with outdated permits?
If I may ask, ma'am, are we? I guess where I'm trying to understand, are we looking at that from a from a local level or from a federal level?
Both, just all together.
Great question. I I think that's it. The question is somewhat complex in the nature of itself because. There's certain practices that are in place that if you are able to meet certain milestones or certain markers. Then you're allowed to be able to go through, like I said, what they've identified as a a shielding process to operate. Because of they've established or met certain criteria that has been set at the federal or state level. We asked that very question and and the state shared with us that they had met that criteria for them to operate under this expired permit. While they're going through this process for renewal of this new Title V permit. So. Based on various practices that are set at the respective level and being able to meet that, then yes, you may be able to have. And an extension of an of of a use that's being able to to operate. I'll say locally at our level, think of some of our conditional use permits, right? We'll have some that will come back before you all for a renewal of their use. However, they've been in operation for five for five years, or they've been in operation for seven years or 10 years. And depending upon the schedule, right, they may, they may still be operating for one or two months while they're working through planning commission and city council. It's at that time, we don't necessarily shut them down, right? They've got a shield that allows for them to operate. Until a determination has been made by the final decision making body. So that's an example for us at a at a local level.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure so Suncor isn't present tonight in the Zoom meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, because if not, can they give us a full report on? Next month, you know, on, you know, updates, um, you know, as some, I have a lot of concerns still. Tonight, I don't seem like it was answered.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Noel, I have I have a couple of questions still. I'm sorry. I have heard from a citizen who submitted. Comments online by noon today. And that those comments have not been recognized, so I guess I'd like to know. What happened to them? They were written comments. The citizen's name is Karen Speed, should the city clerk. Be online. Also, when you talk about education, Dominic, what do you mean? Who's who's doing the educating? Who's surveying? Who's going door to door if we're talking about? Online. Facebook. Or. The city newsletter, that would be wholly inadequate also.
So in terms of kind of the education component. As part of this, so this is kind of in response to the feedback that we got about wanting to understand the information. And and kind of an analysis of like the impacts of this that's occurring from the data that we're receiving and what that means. Is precisely why we would include pinning environmental as part of that. That's that's essentially what. We're asking them to do similar services as part of the overall environmental consulting services RFP. So that's essentially saying. And being able to take a look at that data and say, here's what some of the the impacts are. Here's here's what you can expect. And you'll remember within the environmental services RFP, the finalist is part of that package with Lotus. There's also a proposed. Public engagement consultant AMBG that would be involved. They would help to devolve potentially and and. This is this is kind of in terms of bringing this application forward and getting it forward in front of the deadline. A lot of this in in terms of actual implementation. They they do have somewhat of a page limit of the actual submission, so it really isn't entirely possible to get. Too far into the weeds on exactly how that would happen. But that process would be determined at the time that the the wars are funded to the city. And obviously components of that, so there wouldn't obviously be some sort of web component, as you had mentioned, so. It can't just be the city's website. It can't just be Facebook posts. One of the strategies that we're potentially thinking about. Is you're going to be collecting this data on a on a fairly frequent basis. You'll be able to synthesize this into. Reports, whether that's a biweekly or weekly or a monthly report. And you potentially place that within Commerce City Connected or other methods where you're able to deliver the information hard copy in person. We we don't necessarily know exactly how that would work, but we we fully understand. And we've we've sort of included that language within the grant application. That there's going to have to be other additional outreach. Obviously, COVID is a. A complicating factor, but looking at the timeline for when this project would be rolled out. Hopefully. Some of the effects of in barriers that are in place to conducting engagement in person start to kind of. Be reduced at that time. But obviously, there would have to be probably at least. We I think we were looking at at least six sort of public meetings and and targeted outreach and engagement. I think another strategy that we were. Thinking about as part of this is is working with nonprofit organizations and other groups in the community to. Figure out how to reach those most affected populations through this process too. So rather than just posting something online. Trying to set up a meeting with a specific community group or being invited to do a presentation. On that with easy to digest and easy to understand information on the health impact. So. It has to be more than just utilizing the existing communications framework. But exactly how that happens, I think part of that too is is reaching out and listening to the community. We can better understand. How that information is received by them in a more meaningful way. So I don't know if I necessarily have an exact list of. Items that would be targeted because depending on how this goes. It could be and part of it would be partnering with. Some of the other efforts that are going on with the environmental consulting services overall. There's been. Some thought as part of that of having some sort of advisory board that's assembled as part of the environmental consulting. Work. There's there's definitely some overlap with that with this. We just don't know exactly what that looks like at this point in time.
So the retaining the and doing the environmental consulting team, your RFP was designed for this. For this SEP.
I wouldn't say it was designed for the SEP. I would say the SEP fits really into what we've planned.
Okay, then, that's right. Then what about the project involving retrofitting homes? Is that something you're suggesting for Commerce City or are we merely endorsing what? This group is doing?
So. So it's not a proposal the city is bringing forward. But it is something that we would be a referral partner on. We would be. Involved in the program that they do, but we are and as part of the the letter of support that's been included in the packet. Kind of bringing this up as a proposal that. City staff feels based on its review of the SEP process, that would be a strong recommendation.
Okay.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes, her her information was attached to the latest agenda that we got late this afternoon. So thank you. I'm sorry about that, Dylan. I appreciate you jumping in. I got that information from another council member too. I didn't get a chance to look at the latest agenda. My apologies. Let's see, where was I? I I just. I I've written many grants in my day because of having been in philanthropy. And I'm unclear about why this is not more specific. And I'm unclear as to why we're not asking for the entire 870,000. In order to do all that we could potentially do on behalf of our residents. I agree with council member Hurst. That this needs to be a robust effort on our part for our residents. And. I I don't even know if calling it a pilot pilot program. Makes makes sense. If we hire the best, I don't know that Pinion is the best air company. While I like the team, I'm not sure they're the best at air monitoring. So we need to. Really take a really good look at this because this is an important opportunity and I might add. That this only applies to violations that occurred up through December. It it includes none of the violations that have occurred by Suncor this year. In addition, the permit that is to be renewed, there is an opening for. Public comment or for this city to comment. The first listing session is on January 6th. And I really believe it's imperative for Commerce City to take a position. With CDPHG when they hold this session to say unequivocally. That we expect our residents to live in a healthy environment. That Suncor is not currently providing.
Councilmember Hurst.
Wait, let me go back. Are we planning to make a statement at the CDPHG permit? Session on January 6th?
That direction will need to come from the entire body, so if that's council's will, then we will certainly convey that. But until we have that direction. We would not be so it really isn't coming upon you as the body to give us that direction.
Okay, then I will make a motion during administrative council business.
And Roger and council member, if I may just further expound upon that. The January 6th or 7th, and I know CDPHG is still trying to finalize what that date is. Is an informal session as it relates to to Suncor. And to its operations, not specifically just tied to the permit, but more broad base. The public comment period for the actual permit will come. When that is released for public review by any and all local municipal bodies. Nonprofits. Those within the medical profession or scientific profession, you you name it. Anybody and everybody will be able to review that document, be able to provide comments. Once the actual permit is released, this informal session that's being held is more broad based, more broad brush. To the full composite of the of Suncor's operations.
Commerce City needs to take a position on behalf of its residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I agree. I just want to make sure I clear up one thing that seems to be. That was said tonight, because first of all, the first thing I went into on my side was to make sure that we were trying to stay on topic because. We're talking about the the SEP, not violations of the permit, how we got to there and how the the final, you know, dollar amount came to be. But. Really just, I want to make sure that we call out that they're. They're not currently in violation by being expired permits. I I don't want there. To be a message out there. Everybody's freaking out that they're operating under expired permits, meaning there's no regulation over them. They're still have to live under the same exact values of the permit that they had before. And this delay is as much, if not all of the state's fault. Then then it would be Suncor that they met every expectation as outlined in the. The. Presentation to resubmit for their app or for for their Title V. And so. It wasn't because they didn't get it get done on time that they are. Currently in expiration. It's the process that it takes to get these things approved. That puts them beyond the date of their current permit. And so. I want that permit to be, you know, right, but I just don't want everybody to be thinking, anybody watching this, that they're operating under no regulatory. Guidelines right now because they have an expired permit. They have. The same exact regulation as they had in their last agreement until it's changed.
And if I may, council member, thank you for that clarification. Yes, I would agree with you. Yes, that your points are. What we have heard and what we understand from CDPHG. And what we had also come to understand is that the Suncor SEP process. Is independent from the analytical review and or discussion or determination that will be handled. With the Title V permit discussion that will be forthcoming in in year 2021. So. I did want to provide that that information as well for for councils' just knowledge. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this presentation at this time? Seeing none, we will move on in the agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine. Procedural, informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 14 items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Prior to that, Mr. Tinkelmanberg, you have something to say?
Yeah, we're continuing to have problems with that one feed. So. For people who contact you, if you could tell them to go back to the video center. And instead of clicking on the link for watching the streaming video of Channel 8. Instead, click on city's YouTube channel, which is right above the picture of the city council. That will give them both audio and visual. So just wanted to interrupt for that. Sorry about the interruption.
Thanks, sir. And tonight, there are 14 items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Noble.
Councilmember Noble, I believe you muted.
I was pushing the wrong button. Resolution 202100, I'd like. Clarification as to why we have a resolution on. Locations for ordinances and public meetings since we've been doing it. What's changed?
Are there any other items that council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Councilmember Hurst.
Motion to approve the consent consent agenda as modified.
Mayor Proton.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? Mayor Proton.
My apologies.
Seeing no requests for discussion, will the city clerk please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Give me just one moment. Minutes of November 16, 2020. Minutes of November 23, 2020. Minutes of December 7, 2020. Ordinance AN25720, an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territory. Territory known as Platt Place Annexation, generally located at 10550 Brighton Road, Henderson, Colorado, pins. 7210940015 and 7210940016 to the city of Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance Z96520, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by zoning property annex as Platt Place from Adams County. R1C to Commerce City R1 and approving a zoning document. Ordinance 2301. An ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest. Partnership Grant Funds in the amount of $14,400. For the Bulletproof Vest Program in the Police Department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2302, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant. Leaf Program in the amount of $9,995 for DUI enforcement efforts. And the authorization of the expenditures thereof. Ordinance 2303, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the US Department. Of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funds. Through the CARES Act Phase 3A Funding in the amount of $220,453 and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2305, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by transferring $584,271. From the General Fund. From the general fund to the CIPP fund for the costs associated with the East one hundred and eighth Avenue. North one half east of Havana Street paving project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance two three zero nine and ordinance amending the twenty twenty one budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. By the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for click it or ticket. And the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution twenty twenty dash ninety nine. Resolution approving extension of Greater Outdoors Colorado Grant Agreement and authorizing. Authorizing Cooperative Agreement for Generation Wild Northeast Metro Coalition. Resolution twenty twenty dash one hundred and one. Resolution canceling city council meetings that fall unofficially scheduled to the holidays. Resolution twenty twenty dash one hundred and four. Resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with urban drainage and flood control district. Regarding cost sharing for purchase of Irondale Gold Drainage Properties. Who? Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Noble, you wish to remove resolution two zero two zero dash one hundred. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. I would just like to learn from staff of why this is a resolution. It's about. Uh, posting locations for our ordinances and public meetings. What has changed? If anything, why do we have this resolution on the agenda tonight under on the consent calendar?
I'd be happy to answer if it pleased the council. As I believe noted in the council communication on the item, the open meetings law. Requires that posting location, if it's going to be online, be identified. And then the city charter requires annually that the location for posting of ordinances and agenda items be. Approved by council. And so this is the mechanism for doing it. And it's historically been done in this manner.
And this is just the annual resolution?
Yes, no changes being made.
Thank you. That's all I needed.
Looking for a motion in a second to approve resolution two zero two zero dash one hundred.
A motion to approve stated.
Councilmember Noble?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution two zero two zero dash one hundred. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please take, uh, read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash a hundred. Resolution regarding posting locations for ordinances and public meetings. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing is for ordinance V dash eight nine dash two one and resolution two zero two zero dash nine two and ordinance vacating a portion of Peoria Street right of way. And resolution approving turnberry filing number five subdivision. Tonight's first public hearing will be a consolidated public hearing. I will remind the council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. And council members not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. To rely only on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Steve Timms, planning manager, to make the presentation.
Good evening tonight, Honorable Mayor and members of council. If. Uh, city clerk. Could pull up the presentation, please? While he's doing that, I want to wish you all a happy Merry Christmas and happy holiday season.
Give me just one moment here, Steve. I apologize.
You're fine. Thank you. Right? Thank you. So tonight we have two. Well, one presentation is two different cases and we'll have two different motions. One is for a vacation of right of way and one is for a subdivision and we'll talk about why they are 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 being heard together. This is for two different parcels located south of one hundred and fourth Avenue. And the XL transmission lines and then east and west of the existing Peoria Street within the Turnberry Development. The request by the applicant is to vacate the existing Peoria Street and realign it. That right of way and then also then subdivide for Turnberry filing number five. The current zoning for the property is part of the Turnberry PUD that calls this area out to be residential. And then the future land use map and the comprehensive plan does call this area out to be medium density residential as well. Next slide, please. So again, the applicant's asking for two approvals on one on the vacation. And then two on the Turnberry subdivision. And then just a note for council. In addition to these, there's also a. Uh, what we call a PewDie development permit under review administratively that covers landscaping and addressing. And construction documents. So that's being reviewed as well. Next slide, please. So traditionally subdivisions are reviewed and approved administratively in accordance with the city's land development code. However, tonight there is a vacation of active right of way, which is Peoria Street. And according to the charter, vacations of active right of way can only be approved by city council. And must accompany a subdivision plat identifies how the vacated property will be utilized. So. Hence, that's the reason why both these cases are being heard this evening in front of you all. Next slide, please. So this is just our vicinity map here highlighting the area again, part of the Turnberry Development. South of the existing Excel overhead lines, that green line there. Are the Excel lines, the land to the east is a reunion. The land to the west is Highway two and unincorporated Adams County. And then to the south, there's some agricultural land. They're identified in green. Next slide, please. This is just a map taken from our comprehensive map. Showing again the area highlighted there with the purple oval is a medium. Density residential in nature where these where the spine is going to be. Next slide, please. So a little history on this property. On this property was annexed back in nineteen ninety eight. At that time it was owned R one. And then the Turnberry PewDie was approved in nineteen ninety nine as part of their master planning efforts. And of course, Turnberry goes south in this area. Through one hundred and fourth, all the way up to one hundred and twelfth. And up till this time, over the past twenty years, development has occurred on the north side of Eve one hundred and fourth Avenue. However, now the south sides remain vacant, but now the developer is actively interested in developing this portion. Next slide, please. So again, this is just an aerial showing the current conditions and it shows that it's just been used as dry winter wheat farming. Next slide, please. These are just some images showing again the existing Peoria Street. It's a dirt, basically the same condition it's been in. For decades and again, property looking east and west, just showing that there's no development. Um, in this air, in this uh, Turnberry filing five area. Next slide, please. So this is taken. From their address plat, but it's showing the overall layout. And so you see. Kind of bisecting it is the new Peoria Parkway. This is the new proposed location of Peoria Parkway. And then everything on the the north and west of that is filing five. Everything on the south and east of that is filing six, which is a separate filing that's being reviewed. Administratively right now. You'll also see that through the filing, there's a. A drainage feature that runs. That's part of the. It's called Henderson Creek that runs that basin that runs in there. And then you'll also see that they have, and we'll talk about this, but they have their their private park there, kind of in the center of the development. And they have a variety of residential, single family residential, and then they have some duplex lots as well. Next slide, please. So the proposed development would take their access from the newly constructed and realigned Peoria Parkway. The applicant would build that and construct that at their expense. The subdivision would have a filing five would have two hundred and twenty two residential lots. Ninety two of those are single family detached. A hundred and thirty of those would be single family attached or duplex lots. In addition to those development, they also have twenty tracks available for open space for drainage utilities landscaping. They'll also have a private park that makes up over two point three four acres. I did mention that there is a drainage feature that runs to this filing. They are doing additional landscaping, buffering and burmings to the existing truck businesses on the west side. This particular filing has been reviewed by the school district by the United, uh, United Power and XL utility providers Comcast, et cetera. Also with South Adams Fire and they have no concerns. And then at this time, there is no home builder identified for this filing yet. Next slide, please. So this is taken from their landscape plan again, and the applicant has a color illustration in their presentation. But you'll see that this is just for filing five, highlighting again the single family lots, the duplex lots. The various tracks, landscaping, park and drainage open space as well. Next slide, please. So on the vacation plant, it's basically this area that runs through Turnberry Five. And so that would be vacated and then realigned. As part of Peoria Parkway that would then line up with one hundred and fourth Avenue and Revere. That then would lead north of the development as well. And there'll be a couple of reasons for this, but obviously one is. Uh, one of the main ones is is that we're one hundred and fourth and Peoria kind of intersect. It's too close to Highway two. And it's actually been closed off for some time, but um, but that remaining uh, segment there south of it is still operational. Next slide, please. So this vacation plot of Peoria, it's been envisioned for quite a long time. On the left, you see a the original PUD for Burlington Northern Cattellus, now known as Turnberry back from nineteen ninety nine. And you'll see that that's showing the alignment, realignment of Peoria Street, then that would line up to the north up to Turnberry Parkway. And then on the right side is an image from the transportation plan in twenty ten. Again, then that brown showing the real realignment of Peoria as well. Next slide, please. So when this went to planning commission, planning commission did support this vacation request. Partly because the city's comprehensive plan, transportation plan and PewDie has identified this street to be a realigned to Revere Street and Turnberry Parkway. They felt like the approval of this vacation would signal continued growth and economic strength in the local economy. And that those new residential lots, which in turn would help to entice future retailers to the area. What helped to the future development in this area by developing a strong collector road network through the development. And they've also been in ongoing coordination with all the existing utilities as well. Next slide, please. So within the LDC and a thirty two thirty three, there's some approval criteria. These are the summary, but they're spelled out in the staff report as well and planning commission felt like they did meet those approval criteria. Next slide. In terms of the subdivision filing, again, this is an image from it showing the location of the the lots, the residential lots. Uh, and the open space and the realigned Peoria. And the local roads. Next slide, please. In terms of the subdivision request, it has been reviewed against the requirements in the PUD. And the city subdivision standards and also, as I referenced, has been reviewed by referral agencies, including twenty seven J, the utility, the fire district. Mile High Flood Control, Tri County and internal city departments. Uh, next slide, please. The planning commission also supported this particular request. It did feel like it was consistent with city requirements and is the appropriate size and layout. Again, showing that growth and economic strength in the local economy. And then helped implement the community vision by approving lots that accommodate a single family. Detached attached homes in an area that has been designated for that type of use for some time. Next slide, please. Again, and within the LDC, there's a official subdivision plot approval criteria. The planning commission felt like it did meet those as well. Next slide, please. There is one condition subdivisions require one reading at city council on vacation is an ordinance. It requires two. So. There is one condition proposed for the subdivision case that basically says that if for some reason the vacation. Would not be approved on the second reading, then the subdivision itself is not valid. Next slide, please. The required public notification was done. And all public notification also meeting the virtual requirements of resolution twenty twenty dash thirty as well. Next slide, please. So when this particular packet was put together, staff had received no request for additional information. Just to update you all, as of today, staff has not received any additional request. For or comments or objections to these application requests, so that that basic data remains the same. Next slide, please. So this was heard by planning commission on December first, both request. And both request on the planning commission did vote five to zero to forward their request. To city council with a favorable recommendation. And then you'll again, request one is just the recommendation request two is the recommendation subject to the one condition. Next slide, please. And that 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 concludes staff's presentation. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions I can. In addition, the applicant. Does have a short presentation as well.
See anyone on council having any questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make his presentation? His order?
Sure. Steve, do that. Do you guys pull that up or do I pull that up?
Uh, we can have the city clerk pull up your presentation as well, if that would work for you, Dylan. And then John, you can just let him know when to advance slides as needed.
Fantastic. All right. Well, good evening. My name is John Presbridge. I'm with PCS Group, two hundred Calamath. Street, Denver, Colorado, eight oh two oh three. First off, thanks for allowing us to do this this evening. And as always, a big thanks to Steve and and planning and engineering with Commerce City for helping us get to this point. Steve did a obviously very thorough presentation, so I'll try and keep this pretty brief. Again, the purpose of the request is for the approval of the next phase of Turnberry, which includes vacating. A portion of Peoria Street right of way as part of the PUD development permit and plat for Turnberry filing five, which is really why we're here this evening. Next slide, please. So really quickly, we always want to acknowledge that it takes a team approach. To successfully create a new community and this slide highlights several of the key team members for this proposal. Next slide. So I'm sure you all are familiar with where this is, but just a little bit more detailed vicinity map highlighting the Turnberry community within Commerce City. You know, on the left side and then an overall site map on the right hand side highlighting where filing five is. Within the Turnberry community, sorry, the next phase, you know, located south of one hundred and fourth adjacent to Highway two. Next slide, please. So this is really an overlay showing the existing portion of Peoria Street right of way that we're proposing to vacate. As part of the development of Turnberry filing five. It's really a realignment more so to match up with the existing access location on one hundred and fourth. To the north. Next slide, please. So this slide really just highlights some of the images of the existing successful Turnberry community. We're excited to move forward with this next phase of Turnberry, much in the same manner as the existing community and with a new exciting park area. Next slide, please. So this is really an illustrative of filing five. As Steve mentioned, the filing proposes two hundred and twelve units on approximately fifty five acres. It's a mix of single family lots and duplex homes. We do have two access locations along Peoria Parkway. In in addition to that drainage channel, there are looped trail connections throughout the property. Provides multiple use or multi-use paths and eventually they connect throughout the entire neighborhood. We also have, you can see some smaller active and passive parks and then of course the larger almost two and a half acre park. Next slide, please. So this is an aerial image of the neighborhood park. The the park itself includes multi-use turf play areas. As well as two playground areas with play equipment that's actually targeted to multiple age groups. There's a shade shelter, picnic areas, benches throughout the park and then a really cool burned hill feature. Next slide, please. So this slide, you know, it just has some additional images of the park area. You can see the shade shelter with the playground areas on either side. You can get a better view maybe of the burned hill feature in the bottom left. Uh, you can get a better view maybe of the, uh, burned hill feature in the bottom left. And then you can see how some of the duplex homes actually run directly onto the park. Pretty, pretty neat feature. Uh, next slide, please. So again, uh, in conclusion, uh, the proposal meets exceeds all of the PUD requirements as well as the, uh, design standards for the city's land development code. Uh, it is a logical next phase for the Turnberry community. Uh, with that, I want to thank you for your time this evening and obviously answer any questions you may have.
Is anyone on council have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Gibson, is anyone registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public register to speak on this item and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept findings and recommendations of the planning commission on case V dash eight nine dash two one and resolution two zero two zero dash nine two. Mayor Pro Tim.
Motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on case number V dash eight nine dash two one and resolution twenty twenty dash nine two.
And council member Grimes.
Second motion.
I think you have a motion in a second to accept findings and recommendations of the planning commission on case V dash eight nine dash two one and resolution two zero two zero dash nine two. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we will do a voice vote. Please raise your physical hands in the window so they can be counted. One, two, three, four, six, seven, eight. And you have a motion passes unanimously nine to zero. This time I'm looking for a motion in a second that the city council introduce and approve ordinance V dash eight nine dash two one on first reading by council is seated. Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, motion, uh, to introduce and approve ordinance V dash eight nine dash two one on first reading by council is seated.
Council member Grimes.
Our second motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce and approve ordinance B dash eight nine dash two one on first reading by council is seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a vote call vote?
Ordinance V dash eight nine dash two one, an ordinance vacating a portion of Peoria Street right of way south, uh, south of a hundred and fourth Avenue in the Turnberry subdivision, Commerce City, Colorado. Council member Madera.
Yes.
Council member Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Noble.
Yes.
Council member Wardiola.
Yes.
Council member Hurst.
Yes.
Council member Grimes.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. This time I'm looking for a motion in a second that the city council approve resolution two zero two zero dash nine two. Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, sorry, motion to approve resolution two zero two zero dash nine two.
Council member Grimes.
Our second motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution two zero two zero dash nine two. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a voice vote. Please raise your physical hand so they can be counted. Motion passes unanimously nine to zero. Next on the agenda is Z dash nine six six dash two one and ordinance commending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Commerce City. Tonight's second public hearing will be to consider rezoning the property at seven one nine zero Colorado Boulevard and approving a PUD zone document. I'll remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you'll vote. Council members are not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision and also to rely on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time I will open the public hearing and invite Jenny Oxmacher, principal planner, to make the presentation.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of council. Let me share my screen. Tonight's case, Z nine six-ish, six-ish dash twenty-one is the urban land conservancy is proposing to rezone the property located at seventy-one ninety Colorado Boulevard from public to PUD. Here's the vicinity map. The property is located right here to the north. We have an Adams County, uh, service center. To the east, we have the former Alsop Elementary Site. To the west, we have our RTD inline station. And to the south, we have several properties that are within unincorporated Adams County that are used residentially. So here's the comprehensive plan map. This property is designated as mixed-use corridor and commercial. And you can also see the, the giant T on the map designating that RTD light rail station. Here's an aerial of the existing site. As you can see, it's developed. It's the former home of the Adams County Health and Human Services Building. There's a six-story building on the property now, and then additional parking. You can see Alsop Elementary here to the east. That service center to the north, including the AdCom facility and then the light rail station. Here's a couple of photos of the site showing that existing building and the developed parking lot. Case history on the site, it was rezoned to public in nineteen eighty-nine for that Adams County Human Services Building. So the request tonight is to rezone the property from public to PUD to allow for transit-oriented development. There are two proposed planning areas within the PUD. Planning area A, which includes the existing building and it's three point seven five acres, and planning area B, which is just under an acre and is proposed for new multifamily residential development. The land uses proposed in the PUD for planning area A will include the existing building. It's going to include more varied office and commercial uses that would currently be allowed in the public zone district, including those that are permissible in a C two land use. For planning area B, this is the proposed new multifamily project. The land use is proposed to be slightly more dense residential use than what would the zone district R three would allow. So the proposal is right now capping the density for the project at sixty dwelling units, whereas an R three zone district would allow for twenty two, four dwelling units per acre. It also allows for accessory commercial uses not to exceed a quarter of any building's FAR or floor area ratio. The planning commission was supportive of this proposal and believes the expansion of allowed uses and increased residential density will allow the site to more appropriately take advantage of its proximity to that seventy-second avenue station. For the bulk standards, the proposal allows for an increase in building height for residential and as well as some more setbacks that are more urban in nature. The planning commission felt that this was supported by the stationary master plan governing this area and will help create in the feel of a transit-oriented development, and the planning commission was supportive. The applicant is proposing enhancements to the design standards from the R three zone district. These include upgraded building materials, porches or patios. And the planning commission was supportive and believes that this meets the intent of the mixed-use future land use designation. Here's some sketches of what the multifamily residential might look like, that building with the enhancements. As for infrastructure, there are no major infrastructure improvements that are anticipated with this project. The precise location of the access points, uh, will remain in the ju- same general location and any further requirements will be finalized through a traffic study with the PUD permit phase. The drainage study will consider whether onsite detention requirements are required. For this case, the, it meets the notice requirements outlined in section twenty-one dash thirty-two eighty-five Land Development Code. The property was posted, notice was published, and adjacent property owners were also notified. As of December tenth, staff had received no requests for additional information, and as of today, staff has also not received any additional requests for information. The planning commission believes this case meets the approval criteria for a rezoning to PUD, including compatibility with the future land use plan, both the comprehensive plan and the stationary master plan, that it represents an improvement in quality over what could have been accomplished through strict applications of otherwise applicable zone districts or development standards, and that it's compatible with the surrounding area. Planning commission unanimously, unanimously recommended this request be forwarded to council with a favorable recommendation. And with that, I'd like to wish you all a happy holidays and let you know that staff is happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also available and has a brief presentation.
I believe Mayor Hughesman is no longer in the meeting. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Frank, would you mind sharing?
That's fine. Um, okay, so, um, at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to make their presentation.
Dylan, if you can, uh, can find, um, Todd Lieberman, he's the vice president of Brin Shore Development.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, Todd Lieberman, I'm an executive vice president at Brin Shore Development. Um, joining you virtually, as are all of you right now. Um, we are extremely excited to be presenting this project to you. Um, the, the partnership of Brin Shore Development and Nesbit Development, um, have been working with the Urban Land Conservancy now for over a year to, uh, create a affordable housing development um, called SP Crossing Apartments. Uh, Brin Shore is, uh, one of the country's largest and most productive mixed-income and affordable housing developers. We have two other projects going on in the Denver area right now and staff in the city of Denver. Um, and today, uh, this PUD application includes sixty units. It is a-
Mr. Lieberman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize. I'm the city attorney. I just want to make sure, um, for the meeting, um, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't want to wait for the mayor to come back in because it was a quasi-traditional proceeding. Um, he's having trouble getting back in and it says it's okay for us to proceed. He just sent me a text message, but I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. Um, it doesn't seem like he's going to be able to get back in. Um, so, thank you. I apologize for the interruption. Thanks.
No, no.
Now, I believe he just got back in, so I apologize. I think he's seen everything that, um, needed to be seen for him to participate. Thank you. Thank you.
So, uh, sixty-unit developments, if you go to the next slide, please. The team, as I mentioned, is the Urban Land Conservancy, um, that is the owner of the, the site and the office building. And, uh, they're also providing, uh, the space within the site, which is, uh, SP Crossing Housing Development pursuant to a ground lease. Nesbit Development is an MBE, um, development company out of the Denver area. And Brin Shore again is a national developer. We're working with Christopher Carvell Architecture, which is a well-known, um, local architect and Wilson and Company is a civil engineer. Next slide, please. Uh, the site, as, uh, um, mentioned before, is about a quarter mile walk from the, uh, Seventy Second Street, um, Commerce City, uh, RTD Station, and we are, um, this site will be marketed and will fully utilize, uh, this, this station will be encouraging our residents and marketing along the, um, the line. Um, so we hope that people who are interested in ditching their cars or, uh, potentially just using their cars every so often, um, who commute to work will be, uh, moving into the site. Um, the development, uh, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, the development includes parking in the wings, um, and then some additional parking on the surface adjacent to, um, the site. And the, on the first floor, there's also a lobby amenity space, a drop-off area and a nice, uh, landscape feature that you'll see on the next, uh, couple of slides that, that will be for use for residents. Um, residents will access the building from either a drop-off in the front or a parking lot here, uh, the, the parking structure that you see here. And then the amenity space on the first floor, then if you go to the second floor, um, there's some additional amenity space. So if you go to the next slide, please. Um, there's some additional amenity space. And our units start, and the units, um, are one to three bedroom units. They'll be, uh, at a variety of income levels, so, uh, people of all different income levels, um, that qualify will be able to live here. Our rents start, uh, I think, uh, as low as three to four hundred dollars a month and you go up from there. Um, the, the units themselves are very nice units. They have, uh, contemporary finishes. They'll be energy-efficient appliances, and we will be meeting, uh, a green standard for this building as well. Next slide, please. Here's a great shot of the, uh, rear of the building from the south. You can see a small, uh, playground area, landscape courtyard, as well as the amenity space in the center part of the site. Um, in the background, you can see the office building that ULC owns. And, uh, you can see how the parking, um, will be structured in the building itself. We will be applying for, uh, financing, uh, in, um, the early part of next year from Chaffa. And, uh, this project will be, um, breaking ground in approximately, uh, probably a year from now, if we're, if we're lucky, um, but we have to go through full drawings and permits. Um, but right now, this is the first step, uh, to get the, the zoning in place is a requirement of our financing. And, uh, something that is very favorable is, is seen in a very favorable light from Chaffa. So with that, um, I'm available to answer any questions you have on the project. Oh, I'm sorry. We got a little more details. Sixty units will have approximately, um, seventy-five units of, s- seventy-five, uh, parking spaces, um, in the project. And the parking that's under the, the building will be dedicated, and then there'll be some shared parking spaces, um, in the, uh, overflow lot from ULC, which is really underutilized. The mix, uh, ranges from thirty-four one bedrooms to three three bedrooms. And as I said before, there's a very broad income mix in the project. Um, and that allows for a lot of different people to live, um, to live there. We'll be, have third-party professional management on-site, again, a community room, fitness center, and then, uh, landscaped courtyard as well. Next slide, please. Um, just some background on the site. You all see purchase the sites develop affordable housing, you know, several years ago along with the building, and, uh, they're currently looking at, um, strategies for repurposing and reusing the building um, on the site, but our, our development is again to the south of, of the, um, parking lot that they currently have into the west. Um, we're a quarter mile from the station, as I mentioned, and there's strong demand both within Commerce City and, uh, along the RTD line, as well as in, in the, the Denver area for affordable housing. It's just, uh, at this point, you know, in our developments around the country, uh, it's just, it's, it's such a important, uh, piece of the puzzle right now, um, for people to be able to have housing that is good, quality, clean, environmentally friendly housing, um, that they can afford and can get them to work and allow them, their kids to grow. Next slide, please. So this is again, the, the shot that shows the rear of the building. Um, the building will have a lot of different rich architectural features designed by Chris Carvell, uh, good amount of glazing for windows as well as, uh, a really nice amenity space. So, uh, this isn't possible without, without you guys, so thank you very much for your consideration of this PUD application. And, uh, again, I'm available to answer questions. We have other members of our team on the phone as well, so they may join in. Thank you very much.
Is anyone on council have any questions for, have you guys, uh, had an opportunity to ask staff questions yet? Sorry, I had a technical difficulty there. No, so anybody have any questions for, uh, staff at this time? Council member Noble.
Uh, yes, thank you. I'd, uh, like to ask of the applicant, uh, questions regarding the parking situation. Um, how many, uh, spaces are literally under the building?
Um, I'm going to answer this, and I, I can't be held the exact number because I, I can't remember, but I think it's around forty-five to fifty spaces under the building, and then approximately twenty to twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty, um, outside of the building. I don't know if Katie Hullock from, uh, uh, ULC is on the phone. I'm sorry, it's forty, forty is under the building and thirty-five is adjacent to the building. Sorry.
Yeah, Todd, that's correct. There's thirty-five adjacent to the building that's been, uh, reserved through a parking easement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you have an agreement with ULC for parking, adjacent parking?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. And does, does the building, oh, it's hard to, it's hard for me to tell which direction the building faces in relationship to the tower.
Sure.
Um, yeah.
So the, the, the building itself is a U-shaped building and- So the building itself is a U-shaped building, and the top of the curve is facing the tower. So the building itself, the courtyard, will be facing away from the tower. And I think there's a good image that we can show you, if you can go back to the presentation, that shows the tower in the foreground or in the background. Might be too late for the presentation, but-
That's all right. Where is, and the committed parking spaces are located where?
There are forty spaces directly under the building and thirty-five directly adjacent to the building in a parking lot. That is, that shares, essentially is right there, right adjacent to the building.
It's the, it's thirty-five spaces at the tower, then?
Well-
That's correct. They are ULC-owned spaces at the tower.
Interesting. And is that typical for the number of cars, vehicles that this many bedrooms has in an apartment building? Is it an apartment building or for sale, rentals?
It's an apartment building, and yes, it's typical. And because we're located along the transit line as well, we expect that a number of people that move in here will be taking the train quite a bit. So, but yes, this is typical.
Thank you.
And if I might add, this is Kathleen Bull also with Brin Shore. The parking that's under the shared agreement kind of wraps our building. So it's actually, you know, closer to our, the SP Crossing apartment building than the office tower itself. If you look at that context map that we showed, you can see the parking extends very far south on the overall site.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I have a question also for the applicant. I'm just curious. Are the two properties to the south in potential plans for you guys to purchase as well, those two lots as well?
Hi, this is Katie from ULC. We have approached them in the past, and both the owners of those homes have said that they would rather die with their homes than have us purchase them. So we have asked them, and so the answer is no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant regarding this item? Mr. Gibson, were there any comments submitted?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak on this item, and no written comments were received by the deadline.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept findings and recommendations of Planning Commission on Case Z-966-21. Mayor Pro Tim?
A motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Number Z-966-21.
Councilmember Grimes?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to accept findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z-966-21. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll let everybody know I will not be voting on this item on either of these motions because I did miss part of the presentation due to a technical malfunction. With that being said, we'll take a voice vote. Please raise your physical hands so that they can be counted. And the motion passes eight to zero with one recused. Next, I'm looking for a motion in a second that the city council introduce and approve ordinance Z-966-21 on first reading by council, seated. Mayor Pro Tim?
A motion to introduce and approve ordinance Z-966-21 on first reading by council, seated.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
I second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce and approve ordinance Z-966-21 on first reading by council, seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance Z-966-21 and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by rezoning the property located at 7190 Colorado Boulevard from public to planned unit development and approving a PUD zone document. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
That would be eight in favor with one recused unless Mayor Hughesman, you decide to vote.
That'll be correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 2020-95 approving the second substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Tonight's first public, it's not the first, tonight's third public hearing will be to consider the approval of the second substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. This time, I will open the public hearing and invite Cheryl Steinberg, CDBG Coordinator, to make the presentation.
Cheryl, you should be able to unmute yourself and start your webcam whenever you're ready.
All righty. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. And Dylan, if you could pull up the slideshow, the PowerPoint. And tonight, we're going to talk about the Second Amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. And this is necessary for us to incorporate the second wave of funding, which is called CV3A, into our annual action plan so that we may use it to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. So the amount is $220,453. And you can, next slide, please. And the recipient must be financially impacted by COVID negatively, must be low to moderate income, and must be a resident of the city. Next slide. And we did go out to four different public input meetings with, through webinars. And with the poll questions that were posed, the results came back as, number one was food and supplies for the vulnerable, like PPE and other items. The vulnerable would be our seniors and disabled residents. And then four tied for second place, and that is rent and mortgage assistance, small business assistance, then home improvements and stay-at-home for when we have to stay at home, obviously. And then local COVID testing facilities. Next slide, please. So based on these possibilities, we, again, would like to continue with the rent and mortgage program, looking to put $173,000 directly into, you know, paying for the landlords and lenders on behalf of our residents. Then approximately fifteen percent roughly for our partners, the sub-receipients we would partner with for their delivery costs. And then the remaining balance for the city to administer the CDBG program. Next slide. Now, again, it really is going to vary on how many residences we're going to be able to assist. Based on this, I'm, three thousand is probably the more likely scenario, and that would be fifty-eight thousand. I'm sorry, fifty-eight households assisted with that $173,000 direct assistance. Next slide. So we did not receive any written comments. I did not receive any by the deadline. So next slide. So staff does recommend adopting the Second Amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan to incorporate the second wave of coronavirus funding. Any questions?
Councilmember Wardiola?
Are we using maker for these funds, or is it a different department that's doing this?
That's still to be determined. We're looking at possibly expanding out and beyond using maker or bringing in another partner on this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding this item? Seeing none, Mr. Gibson, is anybody registered to speak on this matter or any written comments received?
Mayor Hughesman, none were received by the deadline.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion in a second that the city council approve Resolution 2020-95. Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
Make a motion as stated.
Councilmember Grimes?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2020-95. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution 2020-95, resolution approving the second substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings for the evening. Next on the agenda, ordinances on second reading. The order, next up is ordinance 2313, South Platte Crossing Building Purchase and Remodeling Appropriation. This ordinance was not approved unanimously and therefore was not placed on the consent agenda for approval on second record. Is there anyone on council has any questions for staff regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve on second and final reading ordinance 2313. Councilmember Madera?
Move to approve ordinance 2313 on second reading.
Councilmember Ellen Thomas?
I second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve and second and final reading ordinance 2313. Is there any discussion? Councilmember, seeing no discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2313 and ordinance amending the 2021 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by transferring $1,259,000 from the general fund to the CIPP fund for costs associated with the South Platte Crossing Building Purchase and Remodeling Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
No.
Wardiola?
No.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
No.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes five to four.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. We have one item from the city attorney, which is a request for consent. Does she easily please leave the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and council formally. Good evening. This item was included in the packet request from, kind of a joint request from the Nexus at DIA Metropolitan District and the DIATC Metropolitan District. There is a twelve-acre parcel that is currently in the DIATC Metro District that was purchased along with a much larger, I believe, 148-acre parcel adjacent to it that's going to be developed in the future, in the next year as one consolidated property that'll want to go PUD rezoning next year for one large building. The request is to make sure that the, all the land comprising this development is in one metropolitan district. And the parties have all agreed, the owner agrees to this, and both districts agree that the, would be appropriate to put that in the Nexus at DIA Metro District. That district is going to be issuing bonds late in the first quarter of next year, I believe, and requires this inclusion to facilitate its development. All of the other steps in this procedure have occurred so far. The exclusion from DIATC has been approved at the landowner's request. The Nexus Metro District is waiting on deciding the landowner's request for inclusion based on council's decision to consent, which is the, which is required by the service plan for that metro district, including additional properties subject to your consent. Both of these districts are commercial-only districts. As I mentioned, the landowner in both districts agree to this. The land will remain subject to the DIATC district's existing mill levy for, mill levy for its existing debt, but not operations, as well as, and it's just that twelve-acre parcel, as well as future debt issued by the Nexus Metro District. And so if council wanted to consent to this, I would send a letter acknowledging the council's consent to the district court so they can act and then go to the district court to obtain approval, which is the final step to process an inclusion and exclusion. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. But otherwise, would recommend that council consent to the requested inclusion here.
Councilmember Noble?
Does this extend the length of the service plan in any fashion?
The service plan will exist as long as the district exists unless it's amended for these commercial development-only districts, Nexus and DIATC. I don't believe that there is a limit of time on the the mill levy for the debt issued because they are commercial districts only. And so I don't believe this would affect the length that currently exists, so for either of these.
Thanks.
Councilmember Madera?
Yeah, so we had someone during assistant communication, they'll ask us not to approve the service plan. So just for clarification purposes, we're not voting on the service plan today, correct?
That's correct. The service plans for both of these districts were approved years ago. And this is just allowing a twelve-acre portion of one district to move to another district for future acts. Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to grant the city council's consent to the inclusion proposed in the December 1st, 2020, letter of the Nexus North at DIA Metro District. Mayor Pro Tim?
Motion to grant the city council's consent to the inclusion proposed in the December 1st, 2020, letter of the Nexus North at DIA Metro District.
Councilmember Hearst?
I second.
Have a motion in a second to grant the city council's consent to the inclusion proposed in the December 1st, 2020, letter of the Nexus North at DIA Metro District. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hearst?
Apologize for leaving my hand up.
Seeing no request for discussion, we will take a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the window so they can be counted. One, two, three, and that is unanimous nine to zero. Are there any council members that have any administrative council business? Mr. Tinklinburg?
Thank you, mayor. Just a question, is council willing to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support on behalf of the two SEP programs that were proposed earlier this evening?
I think we'll get to that as part of administrative council business. I'll leave that one open until we see if there's a motion. Councilmember Noble?
Yes, I had a couple of things. The first one is that I am concerned that for our million dollars plus another $1.79 million for the tower for one 11,000-square-foot floor, we're not getting dedicated parking. If we have issues regarding parking, that will be extremely disappointing. And is there any way to negotiate that? I could see overflow and not having any- And is there any way to negotiate that? I could see overflow and not having any parking available for anyone who is on that fifth floor in the building. Mr. Tinklinburg, can we look at that since we're in it?
I would have to look at the purchase agreement, but I imagine that it's common area parking for all of the floors of the building. That certainly is something that we can explore further. I don't know if Mr. Sheasley has more information on that topic.
Only to clarify, was there a representation somewhere, Councilmember Noble, that we weren't getting any parking or just that the parking was being limited? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That that it there would be no committed parking. So the the previously the seat, well, this evening, we learned that there is dedicated parking in that lot for the apartment building, the new apartment building. My point is, is that if there are spots going to the apartment building, that we should for our million dollars be getting parking spots in the parking lot at a minimum.
I understand. Thank you. I can try to pull it up here quickly and I will send an email out. There is dedicated parking to the city is the last that I understood for its use of the floor. I don't know the number of spots off the top of my head. So I will confirm that and retract it by email if I'm incorrect.
Great. Thank you very much.
Of course.
And and then I am just concerned about letting the the listing session that the CDPHG is having go through without Commerce City making a statement regarding Suncor and its impact on our residents. And I would very much like us to at least provide a letter to the CDPHG regarding our concern for the health and safety of our residents. And wish to make a motion to that effect. So my motion is for us to, for the City of Commerce City to provide a letter to the CDPHG for the upcoming listing session on the permit in January regarding the health and safety of our residents and the impact of the Suncor refinery.
I have a motion that the city send a letter to the CDPHG as part of the permit renewal process. I have hands that are raised for administrative council business. So if you wish to second down, you just see a physical hands. Councilmember Alan Thomas. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second that the city council send a letter to the CDPHG expressing concerns regarding the renewal of permits from Suncor. Is that correct, Councilmember Noble?
Well, I wanted I wanted us to send a letter expressing our concern regarding Suncor refinery's impact on the health of our residents and
So the motion in the second is to send a letter expressing the concerns of the impact of Suncor on our residents. Is there any discussion on that? Again, I have hands up in the screen. So I need to see physical hands. First up was Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, it's just a very vague. So I'm okay with it, but I just was would request that before we sign and send, we vote on it.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yeah, I think if we could see the letter first, if staff could draft it up and then we could vote on it. But I I think it's something, some type of letter is necessary to let them know that this is a big concern and has been. And it needs to be addressed. So I'd like to see the letter first.
Councilmember Noble, would you like to reframe your motion to make it direct staff to draft a letter that we can vote on?
Yes, that's an excellent change.
Thank you, Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Thank you. So now the motion and the second is to direct staff to draft a letter to be sent to the CDPHG expressing our concerns for a vote on by the council at a future date. And Councilmember Grimes, you wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just clarification on what the letter, the purpose of the letter is, what the desired outcome is. Is this an attempt to ask CDPHG to not approve the permits or to approve them more quickly?
It's not making a statement regarding the permits. It's making a statement regarding our concern over Suncor's impact on the health and safety of our residents. And I would like, I'd like to add a time to this that that the letter would be prepared be prepared and back to us by December thirtieth because this session is in early January.
The next opportunity we would have to vote on it would be January fourth. So as long as it is ready for the January fourth meeting, that should meet that timeline.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Can I see physical hands, please? If you want to have a discussion regarding this item. Seeing none, we will take a voice vote. So if you are in favor of city staff drafting this letter, please raise your physical hand in the window so your vote can be counted. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. The vote is seven to zero with Councilmember Grimes and Councilmember Hurst voting no. Is that all the administrative council business you have, Councilmember Noble?
It is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want, you know, residents to know and see if the staff and mayor and other city council can look into possibly implementing a policy or if we have a policy to, you know, what happened last Friday. We had a company come to my father's home and just start digging on his property. And they destroyed quite a few of his bushes that had been there for fifty two years or longer, real devastating. So I wanted to see, you know, like if staff can look into something like that where if, you know, before people just start coming to residence home if they can have to get a permit or some type of, is there a policy in place to protect residents from that occurring? Because it was pretty devastating. So I just wanted to see if, you know, staff could look, possibly look into that. If the mayor and these other city council are in agreement with that, looking, do we have a policy in place? And then the other thing I just want to mention is Merry Christmas to all the residents, the mayor and city council. And thanks for all your work. I know it's hard to say Merry Christmas when we've had such an interesting year. But just wanted to thank especially the city staff for all their hard work and the Commerce City Police Department. Thank you.
Remember Alan Thomas, did you have a motion that you wanted to make in regards to the situation that occurred on Friday?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to look into to staff to exploring, you know, possibly a policy or permit or at least notifying the resident that they will be entering their property before they just start digging on your property without any notification.
Thank you, Councilmember Madera.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second that the staff to draft up an ordinance that would require any contractor doing work in Commerce City to notify the property owner before conducting such work on the property. Is there any discussion, Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you, Mayor. If may I ask a question of Councilmember Alan Thomas? The city currently has an existing trespass ordinance that also exists under state law. We can certainly prepare the ordinance. My concern would be engaging the police department or other staff in disputes where property boundaries aren't explicitly clear and where easements may exist. Our current franchise agreement, at least with Comcast and maybe with Excel Energy and United Power as well, would authorize, well, let me just say it's differently. The Comcast franchise agreement requires that already as a as a condition of the the franchise that contractors and Comcast notify property owners specifically of entry onto private property for that work. And so any entry onto private property isn't, without permission, is technically going to be a trespass of some sort. And so I just want to make sure clearly what we're doing, we want to, we want to specify this for contractors in general or any any party, because I don't know that we can define contractors. I guess I'm trying to look at the scope of what we're trying to do that isn't covered by our existing laws.
Yeah, well, that's what I want to make sure for contractors. Does that include contractors? There's a current policy state contractors, because I believe it was a contractor for another company, from what I understood.
Sure. And so, I mean, a contractor would be treated the same as any other, any other person entering onto private property. But then the dispute would become, is that person actually authorized to be there under the terms of an easement or not? We can certainly draft this up. I just wanted to confirm that you're looking at any person who's going to be conducting utility work or anything like that.
Yes, specifically and and, you know. Well, yes, if you could draft it, because like I said, I do, it is a concern, you know, that, you know, they, there should be something in, you know, more specific policy. You know, we could, if you just, if you can explore the options, you know, and for now, it's up to you, lost Councilman Madera. If you want to, I'm willing to withdraw the motion. But, you know, it's up to you, Councilmember Madera. But this is a serious concern that I think needs to be addressed.
So I I think the issue here is we've had contractors on behalf of either utilities such as South Adams County Water and, you know, Comcast or Excel. They'll have some work to do and rather than notifying residents before they commence the work, they'll, you know, begin doing the work and the residents weren't aware that there was any work that was supposed to occur. So I've gotten complaints more recently about South Adams County Water District where they started digging trenches on people's property and the the residents were, were concerned about the damage that was happening on their property. And, you know, they didn't have proper notification beforehand where they could prepare for it or knew that the type of work and scope of work that was occurring. So if we have something to that extent, because I know a lot of these contractors are working on behalf of other companies that do have easements. And so that's where it gets a little little tricky. So if we can explore or at least just have some sort of policy ordinance where these contractors are working on behalf of another company or utility provide proper notice before commencing any work, unless, you know, it's an emergency where they need to get the the power back up.
Councilmember Grimes.
Not to say that this suffices for notice to a property owner, but were appropriate eight one one locates done in this instance or in the instances that you're familiar with Councilman Madera or Councilman Alan Thomas?
Not that I was aware of. They, we do know that someone, some company came and put like some wires, like markings, I guess, to for underground wires, but then they, like I said, they just came right on my dad's property and went straight through his bushes and stuff. So, you know, I I do want, I do want to actually keep my motion because, you know, this is a serious concern if people are just going to come on someone's property, you know, whether it's a contractor or whoever. So if it needs to include contractors, anybody, you know, that's a concern.
Yeah, in the the case that I'm aware of, they they came up to the the property as work was being commenced to tell them to move their their vehicle or it would be towed. And that was the only notice that that they got. So they didn't get, you know, a notice a day ahead or like when we're paving roads, right? We put up signs and, you know, let people know that work's expected to be on these days.
Yeah, I understood. I was curious more from the perspective that there might be another avenue for recourse if appropriate eight one one notifications weren't done. Yeah.
Any other discussion on this item? You know, the very first house I bought, I can remember I came home one day from work and there was a big old trench that was done in my backyard and it wasn't even on an easement or whatever. And whenever I asked the individual to dug the trench, what he was doing, he said, oh, your neighbor's getting cable installed. And I thought, well, that's great. Why are we digging up my yard in order to install my neighbor's cable? So this is unfortunately common practice of, you know, the the cheapest way to get it done tends to get it done. So fully in support of us looking at a way to make this better for residents so that they at least have to be notified and give them a means of objecting before something happens on their own property. And then you run into the other issue. What happens if an injury takes place? Then now are you all liable? And it's going to go on your homeowner's insurance because somebody was working on your property and they didn't even come let you know it was going to. So I fully support this. We will take a voice vote. So please raise physical hands if you would like staff to pursue this. And it looks like I have a vote of eight to zero with one absence. Mayor Pro Tim Frank is not present in order to do that vote. So is there any other administrative council business? Seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is council reports.
Sorry, I got my hand up a little late. I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor to sign in support of those SEP projects.
I have a motion to allow me to sign the letters of support from the city for both SEP projects, the first being the pilot program for air monitoring and the second being the home improvements in the area. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
I second the motion.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on those items? Councilmember Alan Thomas.
That was in there, sorry.
Councilmember Noble.
I remain concerned that our application for five hundred thousand dollars or less could be up to eight hundred and seventy thousand and we are not asking for all that we could on behalf of our residents. I would like at least for there to be some sort of revision to make it more permanent and make better use of of the opportunity.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will take a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the window so your vote can be counted. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Now we make it eight in a favor, one opposed. The opposed is Councilmember Noble. Any other administrative council business?
Excuse me, Mayor. My hand, my hand was up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did not see that. That'll be nine to zero unanimous. Thank you. Is there any other administrative council business before we move on to the reports? Seeing none, move on to reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items for your information. One is that the Neighborhood Services Division is going to rename itself and rebrand itself as basically code enforcement. That is their purpose and mission. And I think back in the day, someone came up with the idea to call it Neighborhood Services to camouflage its its true purpose. So trying to be upfront and transparent, the division is there for code enforcement. And then also there was a motion made several meetings back regarding the the project at Nexus North. So just wanted to let you know that Becknell has started foundation work on the one million square foot facility in Nexus North. And also they have started work on the two hundred and eighty four thousand square foot facility in the DIA Tech Center. And then
And then, um, the affordable housing project on Mile High Greyhound Park. It's called D two tract. That is, uh, anticipating the building permit will be issued before the end of the year so that they can start vertical construction in January. And then, uh, I am planning to try to take off sometime after the, uh, December 28 meeting, but that will depend partly on what action items come out of that meeting from council. So, uh, I'll get more information out once we, uh, know a little bit more of what that looks like. But, uh, just wanted to let you know again, try to take a little more time off. So I don't know if it'll be one day or two days or just what it'll look like yet. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Tinglemer, are there any other council members wishing to make a report? Mr. Hughesley.
On our report, just wanted to answer a question from earlier. The parking, um, at the South Black Cars and Building. The current easement plan is for 31 spaces, uh, for the city. And I believe 97 or 90, approximately 90 spaces for shared client parking. Um, if that is not accurate, it's changed somehow in the negotiations. We will let you know. Thank you.
That's good news. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, highlight some good news that came out of the Dr. Cog meeting this week. I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Frank, it's not appropriate, but congratulations. I was, I was filling in for, for Mayor Pro Tem Frank while she had, um, something very positive going on in her life and, um, but I will tell you that it was voted and approved. I, it was unanimous at Dr. Cog and one of our projects was on approval on Colorado Boulevard. Um, I'm sure the in-depth details can be had better by the city than myself. But, um, as part of a, you know, regional improvement project, um, that was approved with a list of several others. But that is a very positive thing for our city, um, and just the mobility, um, through that area. So wanted to highlight that and then say, um, happy holidays to, to everybody. Um, and you know, this has been a very interesting year. I applaud council for sticking together and still getting work done, um, through this year. And I look forward to better times in 2021 where we can, um, maybe see each other in person and continue to push this city forward and do good work done. So happy new year, uh, happy holidays and happy new year coming, coming up.
Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, I have a brief one participated in the Metro America Caucus call last week. The state of Colorado was on. Looked like our numbers were declining and then plateaued a little bit, but we're expected to continue to decline. So hopefully that will take place. The state did roll out their new five star certification process. It allows business owners to, um, do improvements and seek a petition that would allow them to open even if their county is under level red or, um, so that program is available. The application process started on December 18th, I believe. Hopefully we come out of red sooner rather than later. So that wouldn't be necessary for businesses to have to do that. So I have for a report, um, we have an executive session that is scheduled for, um, later in the evening. I think we will take the vote now for the executive session and then recess. Now we'll recess now and come back to the city council meeting. So we'll recess the city council meeting and start the ECA GID and ERA GID meeting. I will call the ECA GID and ERA GID joint meeting to order. Tonight's ECA GID and ERA GID meetings will be held jointly in the interest of time. The presentation for each meeting is the same. Roll call motions and votes will be taken only once, but recorded in the minutes for each board separately. Meeting is called to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank.
Present.
Board Member Madera.
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board Member Noble. I believe you had yourself muted, Board Member.
Present.
Thank you. Board Member Wardiola.
Present.
Board Member Hurst.
Present.
Board Member Grimes.
Present.
Board Member Smith.
Present.
Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a presentation for this evening regarding Third Creek West financing options. Will Jenna Lowry, management analysts, please give the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and share my screen. Alrighty. Good evening, board members. I am here tonight with Cowley Companies and their team to discuss the possible funding strategies for the Third Creek West development. The purpose of my presentation is to provide the board with a brief overview of the history of the Third Creek West project. After my presentation, Cowley's Investment Banking Partner will provide a more in-depth analysis of the different funding options that the board has to consider tonight. But first, let's start with a project overview. The entirety of Third Creek is 1,300 acres and the Third Creek West site itself represents 234 of those acres specifically located on the east side of E470 and west of DIA. The Third Creek West site was annexed and zoned in 2019 and is the first parcel of land that will be developed. A development in the Third Creek West parcel will require new road, water and sewage infrastructure to be constructed across E470 in order to serve that area and to support economic development along the corridor, including the city's planned future growth adjacent to DIA. At full build outs, Third Creek West will generate revenue for the city, the ECA GID and the ERA GID. Here is a vicinity map that puts the size of Third Creek West parcel into context when compared to the larger Third Creek land that will be annexed and developed at a later date. So Third Creek West is just right here. As mentioned previously, the Third Creek West site will bring regional infrastructure to the east side of E470 for the first time. The notable upcoming infrastructure includes a sanitary sewer line along 112th Avenue, water mains along 112th Avenue, 104th Avenue and Himalaya. And finally, roads on both 104th Avenue and Himalaya. So at the time of the 2019 annexation, the city pledged to contribute approximately 13.8 million dollars to help fund this infrastructure. In the annexation agreement, the ECA GID agreed to issue $7 million in bonds while the ERA GID pledged to issue approximately 6.8 million dollars in future bonds. That annexation agreement also flagged the developer, uh, being Cowley Companies and their associated metro district as responsible for constructing additional on and off-site improvements. For the benefit of our residents listening at home, I would like to take the time to explain the ECA GID and ERA GID. The E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District and the E470 Residential Area General Improvement District were both established in order to provide backbone infrastructure for regional economic growth. At the time of formation, the intent was for the district boundaries to overlap in order to cover the area along Tower Road and east of E470 as that land develops. Now, the primary infrastructure that the, uh, two GIDs were established to support are streets at section lines, major water lines and trunk sewer lines. So with all of that in mind, uh, the GID board, um, does have two different options on how to issue debt for the Third Creek West backbone regional infrastructure. At a high level, the two options are as follows. Option one would be to secure a bank loan with an estimated 2.7% interest rate. Now issuing a bank loan is the quickest option and would likely have a 60-day turnaround. The loan would be sized to a 10 mil target, but higher mils would be pledged in order to meet coverage requirements. That being said, the 10 mil rate is not expected to be exceeded due to the significant growth anticipated within the GID's boundaries. The second option would be for the GID to issue bonds with an estimated 4.25% interest rate. Issuing bonds does provide a more flexible option with an easier transaction to underwrite, but that route could take up to four months. Issuing bonds also represents a higher risk option since market change cannot be predicted. Uh, so again, this was just a very quick, high level. Main purpose was to give this board a, an overview of Third Creek West since we know that you have not previously had a topic from this development. So before I turn the control of the presentation over to the DA Davidson team, I want to open it up to the board for any questions that you may have generally about Third Creek West. And I'll go ahead and stop sharing so you all can see one another. Thank you.
Are there any, are there any questions for staff regarding this item at this time? Councilmember Noble.
What would be the length of the payoff on, on either of these?
That is a great question and that, um, so option one would have a couple of different possibilities and option two would certainly be different as well. So Ms. Lacey Knowles with DA Davidson, who is our financing expert for this project, can answer those different questions. She's already submitted some RFPs, so she'll just have a, uh, more sound answer for you than I will. With that, um, Dylan, I do believe that Ms. Lacey Knowles is already on, but if you could just make sure she has the ability to share her screen, that would be terrific.
Yep, Lacey, you should be able to share your screen whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can, Lacey.
All right. Fantastic. And hello, everyone. Thanks to the board for, uh, having us here this evening. So, um, prepare a really short presentation here for you and, and really we'll just sort of run through this really quickly. My name is Lacey Knowles. I'm a managing director of the Special District Group at DA Davidson. Um, and we have been working, um, with the team here for some time to come up with options for financing, um, through both the commercial GID and the residential GID as well as, um, working closely with the team for the metro districts also. What you're looking at tonight really is, is unique to the commercial GID. Um, and just, you know, kind of as a high level, that commercial GID has a significant amount of existing assessed value, which really allows us to get to, um, the, the loan option that Jenna was describing. And so we'll just sort of run quickly through this and then I'll break down these two options for you. Um, and happily we'll answer any questions that the, the board might have. Special District Group at DA Davidson, um, just some high level stats about, about us and, and sort of the transactions we've been up to this year. I won't spend too much time on that, but I wanted to give you guys a background on who we are and what we do, uh, in case you're not familiar with our team. We have four managing directors here at the Special District Group in addition to a, a backbone, uh, of sales and trading infrastructure and excellent quantitative analyst group with, uh, significant analytical, uh, you know, skills. And popping down here really quickly to, to this presentation alone. I don't want to spend too much time on what I call our vanity pages. So as Jen described, there's really two options that I think that we're looking at for raising the first $7 million of net proceeds to fund the infrastructure she described. Um, and this is for, again, the, the, the commercial GID. So option one is that privately placed loan. This would obviously, if you guys, uh, would like to go this way, then the next step would be that I would send out RFPs to interested lenders. We would get offers back and then we would come back and present those options to you. This loan is structured with a maturity date between seven and 10 years. And that means that we basically amortize all of the principal over 30 years, but the loan becomes due in about seven to 10 years. And the purpose of doing that is really that the, the bank that would be, uh, the lender here, you know, would only have their principal outstanding for roughly seven to 10 years. And so it lowers your borrowing cost. And that's why you see that roughly two, two percentish, uh, interest rate on that loan. That also means that you would have to refinance in seven to 10 years or the loan would, the interest rate on that loan would jump up to what they roughly call the default rate. It's really between four and 5%. Um, and so there's no, uh, you're not forced to refinance, but if you don't, then you're just jumping up to a higher interest rate. Typically you would refinance that through a larger bond offering, um, you know, prior to the, that balloon maturity of, uh, seven or 10 years. As Jenna mentioned, we size this debt to pay from 10 mils. But the GID would need to pledge, uh, up to a capped amount of 18 mils. Your actual service plan or your, your enabling documents authorized is up to 27. You guys historically, as you know, kept your mills around 10. The reason that we, we would have this, what we call a target 10 mil and cap of 18 concept is so that we have enough coverage to entice a lender to extend credit to, uh, the commercial GID. That also means though, that, you know, you, your loan here would depend on future growth within the commercial GID, meaning you'll need more development, um, in order to keep those mills around 10. Now we fund, uh, you know, uh, sort of security features associated with this loan to ensure that you've got plenty of time for that to happen. But roughly for the debt to, um, to be serviced from 10 mils, then you would need, uh, to have an additional $10 million in assessed value come online here in the next four to five years. Under current projections, we show with those growth assumptions primarily from DIA Tech Center, we're showing that the mills necessary to serve this debt dropped to about nine mills beginning in collection year 2023. But again, of course, that depends on future commercial growth within the district. Or with, yeah, within the district. So estimated net proceeds here around $7 million. The principal amount roughly 7.4, that extra, uh, 400,000 is to pay cost of issuance of the loan, uh, to fund a reserve fund. And I think the, the pros here are that it's a, it's a, a very quick and simple transaction. There's no public offering document that's required to be prepared. It's a negotiation between, um, the, the GID and a lender that goes through us as the placement agent. And it's, it's again, really one of the quickest ways to lock your rate here. And so you don't have the risk of a change in future market conditions. So that's option one. That's sort of the, this loan concept that, um, you know, that, that we've gone over here. Option two would be publicly offered bonds. Um, and so if, for example, you know, the, if the city wanted to go with option two instead of option one, or if there weren't, um, positive responses from lenders after we sent requests for proposals out, um, then option two would look like a 30-year bond. There is a lot of coverage here with that 10 mil pledge. And so the 30-year bond, you, you could have a situation where, uh, you know, you're paying, you're paying that bond down quickly from the backend with extra revenue generated off the 10 mils. And so even though the debt would be sized to a full 30-year schedule of, uh, principal and interest amortizing over that 30 years, you could have that payoff more quickly. You've got call protection here of roughly five years, which tends to be market standard. That means that you can't refinance this for, for five years unless we have a change in federal law, which is potentially possible here under the new administration. But that, the refinance fee would come at a 3% premium in each year until you got to year eight, and then you could refund without any penalty. It's market standard right now. And again, your pledge here would be the 10 mils. And, and, and the nice thing about this option is that you would be able to cap that pledge at the full 10 mils. Um, and that is just because the type of investor that purchases these bonds is more comfortable with that, with the risk of growth than a traditional lender that would, uh, extend credit to you in option one. The principal amount here is about 8.6 million. That accounts for higher cost of issuance and a larger reserve fund that would be required here. Um, estimated rates as of today and current market conditions roughly four and a quarter. It might be, you know, somewhere in the range between four and a quarter and four and a half percent. I guess overall comments are that it's a higher cost of borrowing, but also a higher risk tolerance. but also a higher risk tolerance with the institutional investors that purchase these types of debt instruments. And that would allow your pledge to be capped at ten mills. Um, and another con here is that it's just a longer transaction timeline, it's more costly given the fact that, um, it requires a public, public offering document and a, and a bond pricing, public offering process. So I know I probably talked quickly. I will, um, happily stop here and, and turn it over to anyone that might have any more detailed questions.
Any questions from council for D A Davidson regarding the two options that were presented? Councilmember Madera.
So what is the total cost of these two options?
When you say total cost, are you referring to, uh, cost of issuance?
Uh, I'm talking cost of issuance, um, borrowing costs. You said, um, no, option one will have to refinance. So I know that makes it a little bit difficult to, to forecast that one, but, um, you know, I, I think it would help to see just in total what we're looking at, you know, in terms of interest costs as well as principal.
Sure. So I think those rates are pretty instructive there. So it's a significantly lower borrowing cost to go with the loan option. Um, and, and that private placement, because it doesn't involve a publicly offered, uh, bond is typically a lower cost of, of issuance overall. So I would say roughly, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in terms of legal fees, et cetera. Um, for option two, that, which often, which would involve a public offering, you would be looking at a cost of issuance of probably about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but the overall borrowing cost is higher because of that higher interest rate of roughly, you know, four and a quarter to four and a half percent. So I, I think the, the, really probably the easiest high level way to, to weigh these two options are, you know, one, what is, what is the council or the, the board's appetite for risk here relative to changing market conditions? Um, and, and two, you know, what is the appetite for having a longer transaction versus shorter transaction? And also what's the appetite for having a mill levy pledge that's capped at ten mills, even though that might come at a higher borrowing cost versus your target cap concept, which means you bear the risk, you know, a very minimal risk of there being more growth in the commercial G I D to service that debt with ten mil. Hopefully that breaks it down a little more, um, easily for you.
Yeah, no, I, I think that helps. So for option one, you know, the, basically the, the plan is to borrow at the low borrowing costs and then knowing that, you know, more likely than not, we'll have to refinance at the end of the, the seven year term, correct? So what is the, the total term for that, that option or the, the target term?
That's a great question. So your debt is, is really, it, it runs on a thirty year amortization schedule, just like a home mortgage. But that refinancing piece comes in either year seven or year 10, depending on the offers we get back from banks. Now, if you choose to not refinance, that just means that your interest rate would go from about two point oh five percent that you see here on, on those numbers. And it would pop up to something we call the post maturity rate. It would be four percent, five percent, whatever the, you know, the lender, um, I guess the best offer that would come back through an R F P process. Um, if you don't refinance, I mean, there's no penalty other than that increase in, in, in interest rate and you would just pay the debt out. Now, you would likely want to refinance around the seven year term. There may be other projects coming in the commercial G I D you would want to finance at that point. Um, you would also have more assessed value with the, the commercial growth that's coming online there. Um, and so, you know, you might want to refinance in seven years, 10 years and not wait out that higher interest rate increase in order to take advantage of additional new money capacity for other projects. Um, compared to the, to the bond option, again, that's that five year lockout to, to do what we call call bonds or refinance bonds. Um, and, you know, that's a little bit shorter, but it, it, it means that your interest rate is locked over the full thirty years that you borrow at through that, um, through a bond financing, if that makes sense.
Right.
Just a couple of points, points of clarification. One is that, uh, for the coming year, twenty twenty one, the mill levy is back up to fifteen mills. It will be at fifteen mills, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And then it goes back to twenty seven mills in twenty twenty three. We did a five year temporary reduction in the mill levy. And, uh, so just wanted to clarify that. Also, our, um, financial planning for the district, uh, indicates that it would be twenty twenty six when we issue bonds. So if, if, if we get a seven year offer, for example, and we, uh, issue bonds in twenty twenty six, then that would be opportune time to include this into that larger bond issue at that point.
Thanks, Roger, for that. And, and, uh, you know, I guess that the mill levy that I'm referring to is just what's pledged to the debt. So those additional five mills are probably for operations. And I think that's right. I think another thing to know is that you could probably prepay this loan at any time. So even though the, that you have a bullet maturity in either year seven or 10, you know, we would work with different lenders to give you flexibility in terms of a prepayment option. If you wanted to incur the loan now and then refinance that in additional, and with a bond offering in twenty twenty six, you know, and raise new capital at that time as well.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't know who should answer this question. It might be for Mr. Tinklinburg. Um, the N G I D shows up on property taxes as northern infrastructure. And so who, when this is whichever version goes through the loan or the bond, who is it that will pay it? Is it Third Creek West and all of that area who will pay that? Or is it all of us who are in Northern Commerce City who play, who pay the north infrastructure, uh, payments on our property taxes?
No, this is a separate district from the N I G I D. Therefore, residents and businesses within the N I G I D will not be responsible for paying this. This is only for those businesses and residents that, uh, are included into these two metro districts. So, uh, Third Creek West initially will be residential. Uh, and so that area that is residential will be joining the, uh, E C A, E R A G I D, uh, residential area, gen- general improvement district. And then it's commercial, uh, property, which is along the hundred and fourth, will be joining the commercial area, gen- general improvement district. So E C A G I D, all of, uh, D I A Tech Center and Nexus North are commercial. So they're joining in the E C A G I D as they annex into the city and, and are, you know, plattered to, to, uh, develop. Therefore, that's why the E C A G I D has substantial assessed value already, because that includes those, uh, commercial properties. And, uh, quite honestly, uh, the big workhorse is going to be the E C A G I D. Uh, it's going to generate much more assessed value, uh, as it develops than the residential portion. But again, these, these two districts overlay each other, uh, basically between Tower Road and D I A. The exception is on the west side of the, of Tower Road is the D I A Tech Center and Nexus North. Otherwise, all of it is east of Tower Road.
Well, the less we burden people with mills, the happier it makes me. And it seems to me that the bond has a limit on the mills, but the loan can go from up to eighteen mills. I'm curious, is that correct? Am I assessing that correctly? And secondly, um, do you think, which, which do you prefer in looking at it in your twenty some years of working at this kind of thing?
Well, the, the, uh, all of the mill levy for both of the general improvement districts would go for, uh, debt or ongoing projects. That, that was the person, purpose they were created. In terms of my own experience, uh, I, I think it's easier to go with the bank loan at this point and, uh, have the lower interest rate for a number of years and then, uh, look at wrapping it into a larger bond issue later. Uh, but again, that, that would be a decision that could be made at that time. Doesn't have to be decided today or anytime soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Seeing none. Thank you very much, uh, both D A Davidson as well as Jenna for your presentation. Would anybody on council like to make a motion? Board member Hurst.
Sorry, let me pull up, just get my computer screen back up so I can address it appropriately. One moment. I'm gonna, motion to approve. The, I'm sorry, my computer's having problems. Can you read off what the, uh, what the number is? I'm sorry.
Uh, let's move on to councilmember, board member Madera.
Perfect. Thank you. And it saved me.
Uh, move to approve, uh, pursuing the privately placed loan.
Have a motion to direct staff to pursue the privately placed loan for the E C A G I D and E R A G I D. Board member Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the private bank loan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we will vote on the motion to approve or have staff pursue the bank loan. Uh, please, uh, count on, uh, Mr. Tinklinburg.
Yeah, I was just gonna let you know, uh, our finance director agreed with my recommendation. She's been involved in the analysis from day one on this. So she's working with Jenna and the, uh, Cowley team for Third Creek West.
Thank you for that, sir. We know the request for a discussion. We'll do a voice vote, so please use your physical hands to indicate whether or not you approve this motion. And the motion passes nine to zero. Thank you, everybody, for your time regarding this. This time we will adjourn the N I G I D meeting. Excuse me, we will adjourn the E C A G I D and E R A G I D meeting and we will, um, call the order, the N I G I D meeting. Uh, will the secretary please call the roll?
Chair Huesman.
President.
Vice Chair Frank.
President.
Board member Madera.
Present.
Board member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board member Noble.
Present.
Board member Wadiola.
Present.
Board member Hurst.
Present.
Board member Grimes.
Present.
Board member Smith.
Present.
Chair Huesman, Yevakorm.
Thank you, sir. And we have a consent agenda this evening. Tonight, there are three items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the board wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Board member Madera.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Vice Chair Frank.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the secretary please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Minutes of November two, twenty twenty, minutes of November sixteen, twenty twenty, ordinance N I G I D one seven seven, and ordinance including certain lands described generally as one zero five five zero Brighton Road, Henderson, Colorado, and to the City of Commerce City, Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District at the request of Dan Sheldon. Board member Madera.
Yes.
Board member Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Board member Noble.
Yes.
Board member Wadiola.
Yes.
Board member Hurst.
Yes.
Board member Grimes.
Yes.
Board member Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank.
Yes.
Chair Huesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero, and I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, because I believe that's the last time I'll be speaking tonight. Thank you.
Happy holidays, Dylan.
At this time, we are going to adjourn to the city council meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. City council meeting is now reconvened. Uh, the agenda is an executive session. Uh, would Armando Wadiola, Director of Human Resources, please introduce the executive session and the outside consultant?
Armando, you should be able to unmute yourself and, uh, start your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I wanted to introduce Scott Riley from Affion Public, who will be leading the city manager search discussion tonight. First, I wanted to give a quick timeline of the city manager search process. Um, city council approved the recruitment to hire a new city manager through Affion Public on August seventeen through twenty twenty. City council established a job description and profile on September twenty nine, twenty twenty. Um, Affion Public has conducted a nationwide search that concluded eighty-three applicants. And after a rigorous vetting process, uh, Avion Public has identified seven potential candidates for additional consideration based on the council's profile. The applicant's identities are not public at this time and their application materials are confidential and their disclosure is prohibited by the Colorado Opens Records Act until, uh, until the finalists are identified. Following, uh, tonight's executive session, Affion Public will begin interviews to assist in determining finalists. And once identified, the city council will make public a list of the finalists and will hold a public process with the finalists to, to select the ci- the new city manager. Does city council have any questions before we go into executive session?
Mayor Hughes.
Yes, Mr. Sheasley.
You gained thirty minutes this evening based on your, your time limit by going to the G I D meetings. So the meeting currently would be scheduled to conclude automatically at eleven. If you think that you will go more than an hour and a half in this executive session, I'd recommend that you authorize that by motion now. Otherwise, you'll have to adjourn. I, my personal feelings aside.
Thank you. Does anyone on council think they need longer than an hour and a half to discuss this in executive session? No? Okay, we will not make that motion at this time. Is there any questions for Mr. Wadiola? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Mayor Proton.
A motion to enter into an executive session of the city council with its staff consultant and attorney pursuant to C R S twenty four dash six dash four zero two, parents for, parents E, F, and G for the purpose of reviewing and discussing applications and materials related to candidates for the position of city manager, which are documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provision of the Colorado Open Records Act and determining negotiation positions and instructing negotiators on matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning the contract for the city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurst.
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do a voice vote. Please use your physical hands in the window so your vote can be counted. And by a vote of nine to zero, we will go to executive session. Mr. Sheasley, have you sent that link out yet?
It is going out now. I wanted to also ask, does anybody on council have objection to Mr. Tinklinburg and Ms. Blakeman? Um, joining you in that, there'd been some discussion with the consultant of not, um, including them at, that, the, at this point, but I, I think that may be beneficial to you. Otherwise, it would be me, Mr. Wadiola and Mr. Riley.
Councilmember Noble.
I would prefer not.
Okay, have one objection. Is there anyone else objecting to that? Seeing none, we will allow them to join us in the executive session whenever that link comes out. For most of the public, you probably will not stick around while we, uh, go into this executive session. So I want to take this time to wish everybody in Commerce City and beyond a Merry Christmas and, uh, hope that, uh, you have a pleasant holiday and that you're able to spend some time relaxing and spending time with the ones that you love. Um, we'll proceed to the executive session and then we'll come back later to adjourn the meeting.
Mayor Huesman, I just want to clarify with the city attorney that, uh, the meeting will adjourn automatically at the conclusion of the executive session or if you'll need to come back out for action.
Um, you could conclude it, you could indicate that you'll conclude at the end of the exec- executive session with no further action now, which I believe is the, the plan.
Okay, we will conclude the meeting at the end of the executive session with no further actions. So being as that is the case, I will not be back to close the meeting out. So being as that is the case, I will not be back to close the meeting out. Merry Christmas, Commerce City.
Merry Christmas.
Can we get a five-minute bio break?
Yeah, I'm sure it'll probably take that long for the link to come out and for you to get in there, so if you can.
All right, appreciate it.